Yeah.
Anyone who's going to be speaking tonight, if you could make sure that you've signed the log in the back, please. Commissioners, if you could also make sure that you say your name and speak into the mic when you're speaking. We'll go ahead and get started. Good evening and welcome to the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three City of Kankakee Planning Board meeting. I will call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Beverly Hood.
Present.
Chip Roarke.
Here.
Deb Terrell.
Here.
Arthur Lacks.
Here.
Susan Lopez.
Here.
Steve Case.
Here.
Jose Arturo Barajas.
Here.
Both Dave Robinson and Barry McCracken let me know that they would not be able to make it this evening, but we do have a corner.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes for July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Are there any corrections or comments? Hearing them, we will go ahead and file them. Communications?
Uh, we've had quite a number for the multiple cases we have on the agenda tonight, but they were all related to cases, so I'll cover those when we get to those items.
Okay. City Council actions?
Uh, so we had the continued hearings on U-Haul that we finally made, uh, the planning board finally make a recommendation on last month. That went to the city council at the first meeting in August and was approved to amend their conditional use to allow for some additional storage units on the south side of their building and the propane tank with the provision that they shift the front storage units and make some modifications up front.
Thank you. New business, case number PB twenty-three dash six dash one. Request for a conditional use permit to operate a liquor store at five eighty West Jeffrey Street, Zone C two, by West Side Groceries and Liquor. Will the applicant or applicants please come forward? You would both state your name?
Yes. My name is Sonny, last name Singh, S-A-N-G-H.
Yes, Sonny, and really anybody else's plans on testifying on this case, if you would hold up your right hand, and uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon. If you would go ahead and tell us what your plan is.
Uh, yes, we purchased the, uh, west side, uh, uh, five eighty West Jeffrey Street, uh, like six months ago. And I know you guys was pretty busy on the planning board, so we delayed our plan. So now we trying to open that as a package liquor and, uh, grocery and, uh, kitchen in that area.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I guess just to expand on it for the benefit of the audience, uh, they are here for a conditional use for the liquor store portion of the business, uh, to operate a grocery store or to do some of the food service things that they want to do. Those are permitted uses and aren't really subject to the hearing. It's really just focused on the liquor store component. Um, Sonny, would you maybe mention, you know, about how much of the building that will be taking up in terms of the liquor store component of this?
Uh, the only, all, all the liquor is gonna be on the back area. The front, we know is, you know, a lot of the kids and stuff, they be going to school and stuff. So we not putting no liquor on the floor, so everything gonna be in the back. The every, like a grocery and stuff is gonna be in the floor.
I mean, yeah, here, yeah, well, there's your safe plan. So you got a, you got a, a large walk-in cooler, right?
Yes, that's, that, the side one are gonna be all the beverage and stuff. That on the front is gonna be all the beers. But, uh, no, no liquor gonna be on the floor. All, all the liquor gonna be on the back.
If there are no questions or comments right now from the commissioners, I will open up the public hearing. So if anyone who would like to come forward and speak for or business case, you may do so at this time.
Hello, my name is Kim Green. I live in the sixteen hundred block of South Fifth Avenue and I have for thirty years. Um, the general use store and food service is fine. I do not think that the liquor store should be permitted, first of all, because we've got the high school. We have Casey's down the street that sells, sells alcohol already. We do not need another liquor store in our area of residential use. Personally, I think it would be unsafe. I take my walks. I go Jeffrey Street and back around to my house. I do two miles in my neighborhood. And I fear for the loitering that might happen outside of that store. And I just don't feel that it is necessary that we have another liquor store when we've got Quick Shop that's over on Route forty-five, which, you know, if they want to walk or drive, and then we've got Casey's that also sells liquor. We do not need any additional alcohol in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Stewart, and I s- I stay, um, close to the store that he has on Maple Street. Um, he's a very nice guy. The business is going well. There's has not been no problems over in that area. Um, I think it would bring a lot of money into, uh, Kankakee. Um, I have been on West Jeffrey before when the business was going. And, well, those people who had the business going before, well, fortunately, it didn't stay. But there are people over there in that area that would love to have a chicken place and would love, love to have a grocery place close by, you know, the area where they live, who cause I think Jewel's is the closest place far as grocery store. So I think it would be a good idea for that neighborhood. I have friends and family that's over there as well. Okay?
Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is Joe Scorché. I live at, uh, the thirteen hundred, uh, block of South Sixth Avenue. I'm, uh, two houses away from where that, uh, convenience, uh, what, what is now a convenience store is at. Um, with it being a food store, that would be fine, but I believe, uh, a liquor, uh, serving liquor there, uh, could create kind of a problem. Um, I did have, when it was a convenience store, we actually, uh, the store was, uh, robbed, I believe, one time. And, uh, police actually found evidence in my garbage can, um, a ski mask or something along those lines. But I'm just afraid of what, uh, would be attract, uh, what would happen if, uh, liquor were, uh, introduced into that situation. That's, uh, that's pretty much it. But as far as a convenience store, as food store, it'd be fine, but, uh, the liquor, I'm kind of, kind of worried about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dennis Laurent. I live in fifteen seventy-two South Seventh. And, uh, I'm against having a liquor store in the area. I've been living there since nineteen ninety-seven. And, uh, I don't feel it's necessary to have, uh, any liquor in the, in any facilities along there. There's already eight or nine places that sell liquor on the south side or in the vicinity of Jeffrey Street over there. And it's, it's exceeding, uh, the limits of what we need in the neighborhood. Cause I don't want, once it starts going down this road and all of a sudden they want, somebody wants to sell the marijuana, they want to sell all the other vices that go along against, uh, you know, what we already proposing against here. Uh, I've already been, I'm, you're looking at a man here. I've already been thirty-eight years sober, ladies and gentlemen, and I don't care who knows, as long as I don't forget. You know, when you start going down that road of, uh, somebody with alcoholism instead of alcoholism, then we're, we're going up against a, uphill battle. And I don't care who you are, cause I know I could be an advocate, I could be a consul or somewhere. But you know what? It starts becoming a real bad problem. I start seeing a lot of them down here on River Street. Or any of the other meeting halls of the twelve step programs. You know, and it starts becoming overwhelming to, you know what? We can't do anything about it because they come and they go, and they go out and they do the same damn thing over again, and they come right back in, you know, and they don't know what the hell the problem is. You know what? If we stop treating, we start, if we stop enabling the problem, we could probably start getting, going forward with the City of Kankakee and their needs to help, uh, people out. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, how's everyone doing today? My name is James Hill. I'm, um, resident employee, professional barber at five sixty-four South Skyler. I've been a barber there for twelve years, um, and I'm a youth mentor at the high school in the community. A lot of people, um, unbeknownst to a lot of people, I do when a lot going on with the kids in the community. I try some way, somehow to contact them and make this a better community and get the kids on the right path. Um, Sonny's a friend of mine. Um, first of all, I know his personality. I know his character along with his wife. I know both of them, and I'm gonna be straight up forward about this. In the city of Kankakee, we lacking businesses on this, businesses open up. To say someone will open up a business and it's gonna be marijuana being sold, drugs, alcohol, that's assuming with no facts because he not in the building yet. He purchased the building, he coming along, gonna make investment. We understand, we just can't blow the citizens off, but I guess to put up a no loitering sign, police patrol, there's nobody allowed to hang out. Come and go, come and go. A portion of the kitchen serves chicken tenders, chicken, jambalaya, macaroni, potatoes, bean, rice, shrimp, and a variety of other dishes that come with the crispy crunch kick kitchen part of the, um, store. Several employees from the Kankakee High School in Shapiro, they go all the way on the east side to, um, come and get some lunch and other small items and other items and stuff like that. He opened up the store on the east side. If a man can come to the store, we trying to better this community, and there's been no problems at all, and he been straightforward. Everything Mr. Hoffman in the city that asked him to do pertaining to landscape building, he's did it. He's, um, made the outside of the store look real appealing. Man bought in over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of taxes last year. That's a great asset to the community. I don't know how many businesses, I don't know how many businesses is bringing that, I don't know how many businesses is bringing that to the table, but if a person can bring, with a store, if a person can bring in that much on taxes, it's up to the community, more so the police, and also Mr. and Mrs. Singh to make sure the community is protected from any wrongdoing, anybody standing outside loitering and everything. I mean, United, you, everybody right, liquor's being sold, but if Casey's isn't having problems, um, burgers and beers isn't having, isn't having problems, and other places isn't having problems, how's it assume that it's gonna be a problem there before it get there? So we saying we don't want these problems. It's not gonna be no problems, cause his first priority is the safety and security of the community. Let's be honest, let's be fair. When a person is being an honest citizen of the city, own a home in the city and bringing businesses, no matter who you is or where you from, if you wanna eat, drink milk, smoke cigarettes, drink alcohol, you're gonna find a way to buy it also, anywhere, you know, and when a person paying over two hundred and fifty dollars, thousand in taxes, that lets you know he's putting all his money on the table, he being honest. You know what I'm saying? I think we should be fair. We should be open and honest. If somebody want to open up a business, they should be allowed to open business, but that's why it's rules, regulations, and bylaws. If these rules, regulations, and bylaws is not adhered to, it gets your liquor license suspended. You get your store suspended. So to assume something's gonna happen before it happen, I think that's totally wrong. And I understand, I'm not blowing off the citizens of the neighborhood, but let's be open and welcoming. Because in that neighborhood, I believe in that neighborhood, that side of town, cause I went to the Kankakee High School, I believe they probably got most citizens over fifty years old, cause there a lot of people are homeowners over there, and they been over there for a long time. So we gonna make, they gonna make sure they taken care of first, because they don't want people driving crazy, coming through, bringing the neighborhood down. That's a hundred percent understood. So gotta just protect that first, you know, but I think as an open and honest citizen, you gotta be supportive first before you abort the situation and support it, cause it always can be shut down. But if you don't give a person a chance, how do you know if it's gonna be some wrongdoing if we don't see it coming? And that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Audra Taylor. I reside at three sixty-four West Jeffrey Street in Kankakee. And I am against a liquor store going in at the former convenience site, uh, as many have stated already. A convenience store of any type, whether they serve, serve food or, you know, sell sundries is perfectly acceptable. It's the liquor we have the issue with. And the four main reasons for that, of course, are loitering, aggressive panhandling, drunken driving, and ease of access to minors. With the distance of the high school within eight blocks of this convenience store, it is not unheard of to think that these children will find a source of a person twenty-one years of age or older to get them the liquor that they desire on football game nights, therefore increasing problems on that front. The traffic in front of Jeffrey, with Jeffrey just being repaved, is already turned into the Joliet Raceway. So adding liquor to that is going to cause another issue. There are children constantly, whether it's in the dead of winter or in the summer, riding bicycles, walking, playing in the area. There are nothing but homes surrounding this site. This does not have a business near it except for burgers and beer, which is yet another block up the road and Dollar General across the street from that. So you are dead smack in the middle of a residential community with children and elderly and handicapped. Aggressive panhandling, you can't go to, just as an example, gas and wash on Court Street after nine o'clock at night and not have someone approach you wanting money, and they will approach you quite aggressively, and that's with a police officer standing inside the building. I don't expect that to be any different with a liquor store in a residential neighborhood. I expect to see an increase in loitering. I expect to see an increase in this panhandling effort. I expect to see an increase in drunken driving and a police presence because of this drunken driving. Do we take the risk of putting children and elderly in trouble as far as potentially being injured in an accident caused by a drunk driver? Or do we take a proactive measure and say, I'm sorry, but this is not the right area for a liquor store? Convenience and sundries, no problem. Liquor is an issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Angel Myers Martin, and I live at twelve eighty-one South Third. I'm sixty-one years old, and I've lived on Jeffrey Street all my life. So when everybody looks at me or looks at anybody else and says that there's not a problem over there, you're not opening up your eyes. We got enough drugs. We got enough hookers. We got enough of everything over there. We need to get control of that first. And if you don't believe me, come sit on my corner. I'll let you have a chair, and you can sit there and watch it. You can watch where they delivered the drugs, where they get them, where they don't. You can see where the cops live. You can see where they don't. You can see everything, and they're all within a four-block radius of my house. Four blocks. I don't mind the food. I don't mind the, the convenient part. I would love to have that. That's what I said. I said if somebody would go in there and put a convenience store and a nice little, uh, restaurant or little, uh, soda shop for the kids, fine. The alcohol or, uh, selling of the, um, uh, marijuana stuff and everything, no, not there. The kids come down the street. I live one mile exactly from the high school, one mile. From here to my house is about a mile and a half. And between here and there, I count to nine places I could walk in, buy alcohol, and turn around and walk out with it. Do I want one more near my house? No. Do, do I want a nice place? Yes. Do I want somebody who has good food? Yeah. I love food. H-Tell, you know? I mean, come on. I'm for real. But the alcohol, no. We don't need that around there. We got enough baloney. We don't need no more. Thanks.
Hello, everybody. My name is Pastor Latrice Akero. I came before you all before on behalf of my daughter Cortesia Jones, when she opened up Jay's Medical Services Flibotomy School, and that will be right down the street from Sonny and his wife's store. Um, it did used to be a convenience store years ago and a laundromat. It seemed to me it has really gotten personal against Sonny. I don't know why. Because all I'm hearing is me, 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 me. I was alcoholic, and I applaud you for overcoming. But also, they keep saying hookers and prostitutes and drugs and alcohols. That's not Sonny's fault. All Sonny is coming before y'all is asking for opportunity to bring another store in the community. He said it would not be in access of the children. So everybody is coming against him saying, no, no, no. When you have the beer and whatever that restaurant is, that's access to alcohol. You got Casey's. Kids right across the street can go in and get alcohol. From what I've got told from students, kids going there stealing all the time, and they steal alcohol. You cannot blame that on Sonny. He's telling y'all today, I'm having that without the kids being able to reach, to touch it. He's saying, I want a store. I can serve food. I can have cookies, chips, and, and, and liquor, but I'm only selling it to the adults. So y'all are saying that, oh, I stay on this street, which my daughter has a school, so that would make it accessible for her students. I like walking. Now, I lost a lot of weight, but I like walking, and that makes it accessible for me to leave my car where it sat and walk down the street. If people get to hanging out, he has every right to call the police and say, hey, come remove these people. Where he's at now, my dad, before he was not able to drive anymore, used to go on Sonny's every day. You know that burgundy car my head Elsie, going there every day. Now my dad sends me in there. Sonny has no problem with people hanging out. Nobody out there begging, as y'all say at the wash place. I have, I stay a bonus, and I have people of all races begging, asking me for money, and what I do is, no, I'll feed you. So don't think because he's opening up a place or, or a store that people is gonna be begging. Give the man a chance to just be successful of everybody. We block opportunities wide. But like I said, to me, I'm listening to everybody, and it's selfish. As Mr. Hill stated, he brung in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in taxes. Y'all want to turn that away? Two hundred and fifty thousand in one place. To open up another store, that's a, that's five hundred grand. So what city would turn away five hundred grand? That helps the city to do whatever needs to be done for the city. So why slap his hand when he's trying to open up a store? But the problem is, oh, the liquor, but he just said, the kids can't reach it. The kids can't reach it if it's in the back. So only time a person can reach it unless he hand it to them. So people can say what they want to say and how they want to say it, because to me, that was personal. So if y'all hear them back there, it's personal. It's beyond, oh, no, we don't need that. Find a real reason. Find a real reason. What's the real reason? Why y'all don't want this man in the community with another store? Because y'all making it personal. Y'all don't care about them kids? Because if you cared about them kids, you should have told Casey's to leave. They sell liquor. You're making it personal, and get rid of all this personal feelings for this man. Let it go. And I'm a pastor, and I'm standing up for him. I don't, as I said, as I said, I'm standing up for him, and I came on behalf of him. They're making it personal, and I'm making it personal to support him, whether people like it or not. You, you got, I can, man, I can get personal on some stuff, but I won't. I won't clown the city of Kankakee. But yet he's bringing another business. Don't knock the hand of people that's trying to build something in Kankakee. My daughter built a school, and I thank you all for the approval of that. And I'mma thank you in advance, praying and hoping that you allow this young man and his wife to open up another facility, to open up another store. They complain about him, but y'all ain't complaining about Plaza Liquors, when the husband and the wife had to go to jail for not even paying taxes? But he paid taxes? I don't even get that part. That's crazy. But I'mma be quiet. But Sonny, whether they try to stop you or not, God got your back. So if you did it once, God gonna help you do it again.
Thank you. Before the next speaker, I would like to remind everyone that please refrain from any jeering. If you have any comments that you would like to make, please come to the mic, state your name, and be sworn in. Thank you.
My name's Alonzo Seefus. I'm a two seventy-three South Albert over by the store he has over on, uh, Maple Street. Um, I spoke up for him to get the store on Maple Street. It's been nice over there, clean. He keeps the place up. Have guys pick up, clean up over there. We haven't had any problems. It's lit up very well, very well, and I'm also, uh, clean and sober thirty-plus years myself. Uh, and I thank God for that. And, uh, even though you go into stores, I can go into shelves, there's liquor stores. I go into stores all over the country, all over the country. They bringing shelves, uh, the new shelves down here, uh, across from the junior high school. They gonna have liquor in there. I guarantee it. So it doesn't matter. If you clean and sober, you can go, you can go in any store. Uh, that don't mean you gotta buy liquor. That doesn't mean you have to, uh, buy marijuana. If, uh, if you clean and sober, you working on your program, that has nothing to do with a person opening up a store. That don't mean you got a cop. Okay? And then I'mma say this about Sonny. Sonny came into the neighborhood, uh, put up for the kids. Uh, he sponsored the J.C.'s. He sponsored several youth events, uh, track club, uh, he, he and his wife. Uh, they not on, they, they didn't have one team down at the J.C.'s Little League Park, and I know Mr. Lacks, he always have his sign on the park. Uh, Sonny had, uh, two baseball teams and a T-ball team down there for the kids. So he putting money back into the community, back into the kids, helping the kids out. Ain't nobody, ain't nobody kicking up for the kids. I'mma let you know. He, uh, he, he kicked up for, for the babies. And I was, I was shocked. I was like, man, I called a couple guy, hey, Sonny got a sign down here on the, uh, what, what y'all gonna do? What y'all gonna do? They sign still ain't come up on the, uh, on the fence. I said, man, he coming into the neighborhood, uh, giving back, bought the uniforms for the kids. He ain't gonna, he ain't gonna say it, you know, but, uh, it's a blessing. It's a blessing to have somebody come in, want to do, uh, uh, for, for the community. So man, I, I, I'm one hundred percent behind him. That's more, uh, more spending power for, uh, for the community and for the kids in the community, cause they giving back. I'mma let you know, they giving back. You can see they sign on, on the fence. You can see the kids in the uniforms. You know, that stuff look good. Man, it's a blessing. Man, don't stop them, cause, uh, some people ain't doing nothing for these babies. And, uh, you check, check yourself. Uh, did we, ask yourself, did you put a sign on, on the fence? Did we, ask yourself, did you put a sign on the fence?
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Lauren Welch. I live on the 1300 block of South Six. And I have no problem bringing money, bringing things, bringing the groceries, everything. I work with the youth in our community, day in and day out. I'm a crisis worker. There is such a problem with alcohol. And no matter how much he has it behind this, behind that, our youth have access to guns, which is the ultimate problem, which it can get robbed. It's already been robbed as a convenience store. All we're doing is providing another access point for our youth and it's not okay. We would love grocery. We would love to be able to have a place to go and get stuff that's quicker than going to Dollar General, which is commonly closed because they don't have the staff. And that's another thing. It's great that you work with kids, but who are you staffing? You cannot control all of your staff. And we already have that issue at Casey's. So, it comes down to giving our kids another access point. And I'm pretty sure when he came up here, he said he was gonna have the liquor behind, but the beer was going to be in the coolers, which is what our kids are going for. They're not going for the hard liquor. They're going for the quick, easy. I'm gonna grab a tall boy and get out. And it's not okay. We're coming into more and more issues with our youth, especially at the high school. The fighting at the high school, the drinking at the high school. It is a common issue. Not to mention, the house right next behind this liquor store, proposed liquor store, is owned by a services that houses people of addictions and things. So, you're just giving them another access point and a closer access point. And it's just, it's not okay. Not for us. I'm your prime demographic. I'm 20. I'm in my 20s. I'm prime demographic. I love it. I love, I have alcohol when I wanna drink. I'm worried about our youth, working with our youth directly and seeing the impact that it's having on our youth. It's just another access point. And living so close, I see the behaviors. I see the people around. It's not okay. We're going to have issues. We would love a grocery store. We would love a place where, hey, we need something for dinner. It's right there. We can go and grab it. But it's not okay for the alcohol. It's not okay. We have to worry about our youth at first. And it's great, everything you do for our youth, but it's not enough. Like, we have to be able to limit that. And that's, having the grocery, having that is amazing, but a liquor store, it's not okay. Thank you.
My name is P. Ethan Paul Carl Brown. In case you don't know, the P is for pink. And I live at 1965 East Chestnut Street in this beautiful city of Kankakee. And I used to sit in this chambers as alderman. And now, I know why I left. I'm gonna speak because I'm supporting Sonny. But I'm not gonna speak on problems in the community, what's going on now, what's going on in youth at the high school. I'm not gonna speak on any of that. I'm not gonna speak on how much tax money he bringing to the city of Kankakee. I'm not gonna speak on that. I'm not gonna speak on the fact that basically there's liquor, that he wanted to open a liquor store in the grocery store. I'm not gonna speak on that. Because I'm gonna speak on the personality of the man that operating the business. Because I truly believe, because when he first moved over on Maple, I was one of the loudest one against that, loudest one against that. And he proved to me through his work that he's a man of his word. Every time we had a problem, we went to him, we talked. He didn't sit and say, let me see. He solved that problem. So, I think any business that come into this community or into your neighborhood, you wanna run by a person that's gonna be sensitive to the community needs. If there's a problem, he's gonna be able, he willing to address it. You're not gonna solve the problems of high school and what's going on in the community. The Panham, I've never seen one on Maple, so I don't know. It might be going on, but I haven't seen it. But the fact of that is, this is a honest man who keeps his word. He gonna run his business that way. If you got a problem in that community, you know how you go to some businesses, they don't wanna talk to you about it? You can talk to this man about it. And I guarantee you, he gonna get results and he's gonna try to work with you and let you know what he's doing to clear up that problem. That's all you can ask of a business person. I'm not gonna say what he can have, what he can't have. That's his business model. And if you own a business, it's your business model. But I'm just here to support him because I truly believe that if he open that business, he gonna make sure that the community is gonna come first. He's gonna be sensitive to the needs of that community. If there's a problem, he's gonna be willing to work with the community and the alderman's there to solve that problem. And if it call money, he's gonna do that. He's not gonna say, uh-huh. He's not like that. So, that's why I'm supporting him, because he's a gentleman that kept his word to me, proved to me. Because I'm telling you, I thought Maple would be, would really be ghetto. I hate say that word, but I really did. And he definitely proved everything to me wrong. So, I praise him for that. And when he called me, I said, I'd be glad to tell you. That's why I'm telling you, my experience. I'm not, I'm not gonna talk about what the sin of alcohol, the sin of smoking, prostitution, Panham. That ain't nothing, I can't speak on that. I don't have those problems. But I do know this. I do know this. If you got a problem, it's nice to have some business that willing to work with you to solve that. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Larry Enz. I live at 675 West Sterling. I also own a property right next door to this gentleman's zoning request. I've heard a lot of people talk today about this man's character. I have no question that this man's character is fine and good. The problem I have is he's picking the wrong place for a liquor store. And driving around there, there's three liquor stores on Skyler Avenue. There's liquor available at Casey's. There's liquor available at Two Speedways. There's liquor available at Jewel. There's liquor available at Burcot's. There are numerous bars in the area. I just don't think it's a good place. Early in my career also, I managed the Rudy's Market here on Skyler Avenue. Some of your older people probably remember that. And I think this gentleman is making a mistake, because in that area that he wants to open a grocery store and a liquor store, there is already a convenience store there called Two Brothers. It's just right off of Third Avenue in Washington. There's also a Dollar General there, would be off of Eighth Avenue. There's also a Casey's there that sells the same type of groceries. And from being in the business, I can tell you, this man can't compete with them. They are huge organization. They're gonna buy their stuff cheaper than he can buy it. They're gonna sell it cheaper than he can sell it. Also, another objection I have is there's a high school right down the street and the traffic is pretty heavy of kids walking back and forth, particularly in the summer. There are three churches on that street with another church that's going to be built, from what I understand, next year. I just feel that, I feel sorry for this gentleman, but I think he's making a mistake. I think he cannot compete in that area. And I know the citizens of Kankakee don't wanna be known as the liquor capital of the world. I think we have enough liquor sales in this town. And I don't believe anybody can disagree with me. I think we have too many. Thank you. Appreciate you listening to me.
Hello. My name is Johnny Smith, well-known as a pastor over there on 1292 South Eighth Street. I hear a lot of people saying things about the young man here. And, you know, about me being a pastor and in leadership and any other pastor or clergy might be here. Our thing is to look at the community and look at the city. One thing about it, we don't have a high violence, high crime rate city. Yes, there's a lot of people in the city use alcohol and drugs. But we just can't, I don't come to condemn anyone. I don't come to condemn anyone. But I'm looking at the area over there. I've been over there in that area for 13 years. Been a very quiet, very peaceful area. Now, yes, my church is over there and there's three other churches over there. There's a high school over there. I'm over there every day. Every day, I'm at the church. The church doors is open every day for someone to walk in, if they need to come before the altar, if they need someone for counseling to speak to within that day. We trying to get people delivered from drugs. We trying to get people delivered from alcohol. That's the clergy. That's our job in ministry, to want to see a productive city. Yes, I heard about, you said, the revenue, the taxes he bring in. Who said he still can't bring taxes in from selling food? You still can bring taxes in for selling food, but just, everybody is talking about, the fact is, it's a high area where kids is always going back and forth, children going back. I watch it every day, 'cause I'm there every day. Kids going back, back and forth, back and forth, even from the school, back, back and forth, back and forth. Now, you bring the alcohol in, now you're gonna have trafficking. You're gonna have people coming in all the way on a quiet side of the city. Kankakee is very quiet on that side. Now, you finna get it loud. You finna get, you finna bring in people that do drugs, people sell drugs, people drink. You finna bring, you finna bring that in on that side of town. Now, I heard the young lady, and I commend her. She's speaking, she don't have any business over there. She don't have a business going on over there. She doesn't live over there. She doesn't live in the city of Kankakee. She live all the way over there in Bourbon, A. That's your daughter.
Excuse me?
But that's your daughter. I'm talking about-
Pastor Smith, if you could talk to me, please?
Yes, yes, ma'am. So, I'm talking about people that are already conducting business over there. People that already been living over there numerous of years with peace and with quiet. You bring in the liquor store. Okay, I know he might cap it off. The store might close at 11, it might close at 12. But still, during the day, then, within that time, you still got people going back and forth getting alcohol. Back behind the store, you got a lot of children back there. Back on the other side of the store, you got projects back there where a lot of children are back there. I watch children go back and forth all day, because I was renting the building where Mr. Larry had. I also had a business over there, a store over there. So, I watch children go, watch children come. But like I said, he's here for an opportunity, looking for a chance to have a business in the city of Kankakee. Have no problem with that. I know everybody have to make a living, everybody have to eat and everybody got to, but we got to take into consideration too, the people that are already done reside over on that side of the city for years. No problems, no drug trafficking, no, nobody walking up and down the street that I seen on Eighth Street and when I had the business right there, 288 West Jeffrey. I didn't see a lot of drunks. I didn't see a lot of prostitutes. I didn't see all of that. And what I'm saying now, we don't wanna see it now. We don't wanna see it now. We want the city, you know, it's clean over there, it's beautiful over there, it's very productive over there. Children feel safe over there. You allow this to come in, people, kids gonna be, continue to have to be watched 24/24 now, where they done had the freedom over so many years, where the kids just can go in the front yard and play without any threat or somebody walking up and down the street drunk or, you know? We don't have that on that side of the town. So, I don't knock you. I commend you, man. I commend you to have a business and to go for it. But self-fulfill, you got a church over there, self-fulfill, you got a business over there, you don't care. You can come and say a thousand good things, but you're not over there. You don't, you haven't observed it for 13 years as I have. You have not observed it for 20 years or 12 years as the other people have that lives over there. So, all we saying is, the store is fine, the liquor part, the liquor part. And when you say the liquor part, people, you know, they get, they have a problem with that. But like I said, it's been a clergy and there's some clergy members here. We don't wanna see alcoholers. We don't wanna see drug heads. My, our job is to get them converted, get them away from drugs, get them away from alcohol, so they can live a productive life and everybody can be happy in the city of Kankakee. That's all I have to say.
Good evening, everyone. Coming behind the apostle, it's gonna be kinda rough, but I just wanna say one thing. And, you know, as be, well, let me state my name, Alderman Reggie Jones, Seventh Ward, Kankakee. Also, I was given the operation, I believe, when the zones changed, so now that's in the ward. And I was like Alderman Brown for a while, like, oh, man, did they give us some problems or what? You know? So, it was like, man, let's see how this go. Now, you know I'm not for alcohol, I'm not for smoking, I'm not for nothing. However, here's the deal. When you have a business model, okay, you cannot tell people how to run their business model, 'cause I know business, I run my own business. There's certain things that I do. You can't go to Casey's and tell them, you can, it's good to have this, but you can't sell alcohol. I don't know their business model. And I guarantee you, we getting ready to deal with Quick Stop, we dealing with Ricky Rockets, we dealing, there's a business model to everything that people do. And you must understand that. You can't change nobody's business model. I am a businessman and I'm, that's one of the reasons why y'all always hear me, you know? I'm never, I'm never gonna get in my feelings and I want everybody to say, but I understand business. And the cat's out the bag right now. When you are gonna run a business, there are certain things that you gonna do and need to be successful. Yes, you may run a restaurant, but what restaurant, bar and grill, don't wanna sell liquor? If you put a bar and grill up, I'm just telling you right now, you're gonna struggle if you in there trying to sell, trying to have a bar and grill with no alcohol. Now, that don't mean I'm gonna come drink it, but I understand business models. And you, they have to meet certain things if they're gonna do business. Now, in the community, I'm gonna just tell you, you know, y'all know if you know me, I'm everywhere, you know? So, I see everything. Do I watch Maple and I watch it all? Have I talked to the cops? Have we seen this and that? No, nobody has, I mean, you need to check the records. Let's make sure what's going on. And if it's going on, you know, I'm one of the ones. We hold the levers. We will pull the levers if it's wrong, 'cause I, you know, I can't tell nobody, you know, I always try to stay out of people's ward, but I support what he's done for us, not just saying, you know, you know, everything is going on, they fighting in the parking lot and all. We haven't even seen that. I haven't seen prostitutes. I haven't seen nobody standing there. I have had that, you know, gas and washed, but I haven't seen it. And we're supposed to on the roughest side of town. It ain't bad. I walk through there all hours of the night. And, you know, kids are gonna be kids. We got kids everywhere right there. And if I've, and I've told them that, you know, we've talked, I'm gonna be candid. I said, man, if I find out some kids are getting alcohol, I'm coming at you. So, I've never heard that and I come all hours of the night. Now, can I say one might miss? I don't know, but I've not heard it. Chief enough haven't told me about it. I don't know. But I know one thing, you know, he's a good man, just like any other businessman, that we have pushed stuff through. Let's just keep it real. We support businesses here in Kankakee, all right? So, let's not act like, you know, this one is a little different from this one. We getting ready to probably push through a whole lot of projects, things that we may and may not like, but it's the business model. If it's a business model, if, I'm not even gonna call people names, but if they're doing good business, I'm for it. But that don't mean, I don't like, you know, my wife like dresses and all that. I don't like a dress store. But at the end of the day, if somebody wanna open up a dress store, they can open it up. I'm not gonna shut it down because I don't wear dresses or I don't want her to spend my money, you know? So, you know, don't break the dress store in the town. But what I'm saying is, I support the model, I support the chicken, I support all of that. And if that's what his model is, that's what his model is. I believe that the kids and the one across the street is worse to me than he would be, 'cause we are right across, you know? Y'all know I coach football for, at the high school. It's right there. And I commend District 111 for doing the best that they can do with our kids, 'cause our kids are handful. I can talk about them, 'cause I love them in a real way. I can do that, you know? They are handful, but they mine. But they've done a tremendous job trying to keep them out of Casey's, from going all over. But I believe that Sonny, if you're gonna, if you're gonna get it, you know, Mr. Sonny, I'm a professional now, I believe he'll do a good job, 'cause he's done it on my side of town. I'm just saying, I'm supporting him, just like I'll support in many others. I want everybody to say, but I don't want nobody to do nothing- I want everybody to say, I don't want nobody to do nothing. Y'all know I got the biggest one coming. I got gambling coming, and I got liquor and everything coming. And we are right over by the junior high. We're gonna work with it, we gotta do what we gotta do. But I don't think it's Mr. Heine's problem that we are getting ready. He put twenty-six million dollars in, he's telling me it's gonna be three hundred and fifty thousand if he gets through with it, because he say he spent a three hundred and fifty there. So I'm just talking facts. So, you know, and am I worried about the neighborhood? Absolutely. If there's a problem, and, um, Alderman Lance says it, you know, I'm gonna, hey, I'm with him. Him and Alderman, Danita, hey, shut it, shut it down, pull the levers on it. Just like I told someone in my ward. I'm not bringing it up here, but I'm supportive of business. I'm supportive of what we need in, in this community. But at the same time, I'm for public safety number one in our community. Thank y'all for listening.
You're sworn in.
Okay, good. My name is Tyler Tall, I'm a former Alderman in the city of Kankakee. I live at six, six, six North Harrison Avenue. I'm here to support the, the liquor license for the new business on West Jeffrey. And let's talk about facts. Everybody has been emotional tonight. In the city of Kankakee, as I sat there, I know there are several projects that I didn't agree with, but I voted for. And there were some projects that I didn't vote for, that everybody else voted for. I stood alone a lot of times. I'm coming tonight because the fact is, the city of Kankakee, they use businesses. We need tax revenue. We need sales tax revenue, we need property taxes, we talk about vacant properties. Let's be honest. He's coming here tonight to ask for a liquor license, a conditional use permit. That's what we're arguing about, and that's what we're talking about. The facts are on the table. Let's look at the facts. We talk about sales tax, we talk about property tax. If you want to talk about crime, you want to talk about the liquor license in the city of Kankakee and the crime, let's be honest. There's crime all over the city of Kankakee. I live in the neighborhood just like you live in the neighborhood. There's been murders, there's been overdoses. Didn't hear anybody talk about those. Let's be honest. We've had liquor licenses that have been suspended just recently. And not for any length of period of time. If I'm gonna suspend a liquor license for crime or anything else, for violating the ordinances, let's talk about suspending for real. If he violates the liquor license, if he's given one, then suspend his license. That takes money out of his pocket and out of his family's pocket.
Mr. Tall, could you-
I'm just, I'm just talking. If you want me to face you to talk, I'll face you.
Yes.
But I'll talk to you. I'll tell you the facts.
Okay.
The facts are that we suspended some liquor licenses just recently. And those were brief. That didn't solve the problem. But when you talk about liquor license, you're gonna be giving out more than just one liquor license this year. You're gonna be talking about the new businesses that are coming, the truck stop, let's talk about it. He didn't ask for you guys to give him any revenue to open this business. That's a fact. All the other businesses that are coming, the quake shops, Ricky Rockets, they were digging into taxpayers' pockets. That, those are actual facts. So let's just be honest. Thank you.
I don't think it reaches that far, Steve.
Oh, I can't, hang on one second. You should be good.
Hello, my name is Stephen J. Hunter, nineteen seventy-five, East Lopez, uh, Kankakee, Illinois. And you've heard a couple individuals who've, who've served this particular city well. Alderman Brown, who served in, on the Seventh Ward, East Side of Town. Alderman Tall, from the Meadowview area as well, too. And yours truly. Those are approximately about seventy-five, eighty years of service to this city. And having been, uh, given testimony before this particular board in previous years. I've given over half of my life towards the city and the health, safety, and welfare for the city of Kankakee. Not only just in the Seventh Ward, the East Side, the North Side, but all over the city. Now I represent, uh, parts of the county. I'm here to just, uh, reiterate some of the comments that have been made previously. Your particular decision, Commissioner, should be predicated upon fairness and equity, not personal biases. It should be based upon facts, data, and the law, and the rules and regulations, uh, that a government does. Mr. Singh and his family, I've met his family. I've been in a meeting with the mayor and his other, uh, city officials regarding his vision. As Mr. Hill articulated, and Alderman Jones articulated, the fact that he generated in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in taxes last year. He projects from the, from the Maple Street location to go over three hundred thousand. He's employed people who look like me. Uh, he's provided services to our people on, on the East Side. He has generated jobs. He has cleaned up the dilapidated building, the old Tulsa cleaner. Uh, he has capitalized on the traffic pattern, people going to, to, uh, rum a park in eastern part of, of the city. He has been an asset in, in the city of Kankakee. You've heard the, the things that he has contributed his hard earned money towards. I know that he has helped the school district with respect to, uh, buying supplies and book bags for our, our youth. Those individual kids who didn't have the money, or their parents didn't have money, or their grandparents didn't have money to buy book bags and supplies, he did that. He has also sponsored activities at Pioneer Park for Alderman Jones. Anytime we've asked him to do something, he's come forward. He's not a shyster. He's a pragmatic, uh, businessman. Additionally, when you think in terms of all the different activities and the assets he's provided, he's gonna do more. It's my understanding that he is going to invest in excess of three hundred thousand dollars in the Jeffrey location. That's not something just to sneeze at. I mean, that's hard on a dead president, he's gonna invest. I think it's a misnomer when you think in terms of talking about liquor. That's just a small portion of what his service delivery will be. Como estebles, as they say in Spanish, mi amigo? Groceries, items for the households, and a very small portion of liquor. He articulated, uh, the safeguards regarding the liquor. You can't, you have to predicate your vote on facts. There are safeguards, he articulated where the liquor shall be. I remember having lived in Kankakee for most of my life, other than the college and traveling in Europe. There are some people who didn't want the high school over there, Westview. People kicked against that. You know, people find reasons to kick against, kick against anything. People were kicking against Ricky Rockets. People think that they're the whores and the prostitutes and the dope will happen, maybe. But we have safeguards, with Alderman Tyler Tall, and they can, we have police. I checked with the police to find out if there's been any robberies, purses, snicks, any rapes, any, any puffered items in his, um, Maple Street location. None. We cannot predicate our vote on petty biases. What, what I'm saying to you is that this man's reputation is impeccable. He's talking about investing in Kankakee, he believes in, in Kankakee. I believe in, in Mr. Singh. Those of you who are here should stand up and say, we want external dollars. He lives here, he's raising a family here. His kids go to school here. And all I'm saying to you, ladies and gentlemen, where were you when, when the, the thing of burgers and beer? What about Casey's? Now, I've been in this house for a long, long time, forty years, serving right over here with, with the Alderman. I didn't hear anybody bitching or bragging about that. But I, I want you to be fair and equitable in your deliberations, and be predicated upon pragmatism. Not personal insults or perceptions of what may transpire. We have empirical evidence which indicates that he runs a viable business, a positive business. Alderman Jones talked about his business model. Those of you who are against, uh, the Ricky Rockets, and you don't have to go over and buy a gas and shell. You don't have to go over there and buy marijuana. You don't have to go to Wendy's or any other business that's gonna be generated over there. But all we're saying is give him an opportunity. Alderman Brown mentioned that there are safeguards. If indeed he's not running a viable business, the police will take care of it. Mr. Hoffman will tell you, uh, the mayor will tell you, there was an issue regarding the signs, but he took care of that. He didn't fight it. He complied with the request that was, was offered to him. And I'm saying to you, he has invested in this community, he believes in this community. And I think it's fitting and proper that we, as residents and individuals who reside in this particular community, stand up for him and give him an opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lance Marsack, Alderman, Fourth Ward. Didn't prepare a speech tonight, but why are we here? Why are we, why are we here if this is such a great idea? Why is this, why is this zoning such a contentious issue? It, if it's such a great idea, it, it should be rezoned. So, just like all across the town, that zoning is actually being worked on by this board, Mr. Hoffman, because there's a lot of zoning issues. Over a decade ago, I was in here on another issue, and it was voted on, and it was, one individual cast a vote. And she come up to me after the meeting, and she said, you're not happy with me, are you? I said, no, I'm not happy with you. But if you believe that you represented the city and your ward, then it don't matter what you and I think. You did your job, but I'm not happy with you. So we've heard a lot of, a lot of talk from other individuals that are not in the ward. And now I'm an Alderman. I'm here to represent the ward that it's in. I don't question his character. I don't know what's happened in the past, but I actually go knock on doors and ask the residents that are impacted around whatever's going on in the ward. There was another issue in the ward, I went around the, 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 uh, the building that was in question then. And it was overwhelming, no. Same thing with this. The people that I, last Friday, went out knocking on doors, and it was three hours that I'll never get back in my life. But it's interesting to converse with the residents. That's how you learn things. It don't matter what I think, I have an opinion. But I didn't offer my opinion until they gave me their answer. Yes or no? Are you in favor or not in favor? Overwhelming, I did the, I, the, the block north on Sixth and the block south on Sixth. The block north on Fifth, the block south on, on Fifth. On Sixth Avenue, the people that opened their doors, there wasn't one yes. I'm like, it, it can't be that way. It, it don't, it, it can't be that way. I go over on Fifth, I get, um, a couple, they were, they were for it. The, the numbers actually of people that opened the door was, uh, twenty to four. There was twenty against and four that were in favor of it. I don't, I don't believe, as I stated before, the chicken place, the restaurant. And I, I had heard from somebody I do respect about burgers and beer. That's apples and oranges. This, this is not a restaurant that serves alcohol. This is actually, we're talking about a business that serves liquor to go. So, I stopped at the four blocks around it, and I've had other conversations with people. I mean, how far do we go out? I look at the people that are most impacted, and that's all the blocks that are directly surrounding this. As it was brought up before, we have enough liquor stores. I mean, coming, driving here, um, right up Skyler, there's a guy with his twenty-two ounce can walking right by, right by liquor lot. Those two places have, have, you know, they recently were suspended, uh, for single serve. It's been brought up in a meeting that when those, those places were closed, guess where, guess where they went? They went over to Jewel. They went over to the gas station on, on River Street. The point being is, it don't matter if you close those two, because they're gonna go to another location. So what do we do? What, what is, you know, what is the goal here? The goal on zoning, I would believe, is to prevent something being placed in a location that it don't really fit. And then you question, why does it not fit? Who makes that decision? My personal belief is, the residents that are gonna be affected by it, whether they want it or not, th- those are the people that are gonna be affected by it. With, there's talk about taxes, you know what? Right now, the city's in great financial shape. Great financial shape. But, do we keep shooting ourselves in the foot, bringing in stuff that is known to have issues? It's a significant issue downtown. His? It, it, it may not be a problem at all. But why would you, why would you put that in a location where there's overwhelming residents that are saying, we don't want it? They want food. I want food. You know? I visit, I visited his place over on Maple Street. Okay? I mean, it, nice, nice place. But I had the conversation. Not a liquor store. There's a difference. There's a difference at convenience store, a, a food store. If he opened up a restaurant there, it, it's the liquor portion, I think that, and I think you would find that you would get a lot of support. If it, I, I don't think we'd be here. You wouldn't see this many, you don't ever see that, unless it's a really big issue. You don't see this many people in the audience. And I, I think that's the point. The liquor component to this is, is the problem. But, once again, don't matter what I think, I'm going to represent my ward and what I believe is doing the right thing for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonny, would you like to respond to any of the comments?
Hi. Ma'am, sure, I do have one more comment that came in by email, if I could just quickly-
Sure.
-cover that one before Sonny has just respond. Uh, and this is from Corticia Jones, uh, the operator of Jay's Medical Service Philobotomy School, which we ha- heard recently. Uh, she is supportive of the proposal, uh, for many of the reasons that her mother mentioned, but, um, she lives in the area, has a business in the area, and thinks that some of her students, um, might stop by and, and visit here, and it would be convenient for them, as well as people that, uh, work at Shapiro, uh, and other employers in the area. So she is supportive, so, sorry. Oh, and I guess one other thing I wanted to, while I've got the floor, uh, I will also say, just to reiterate some of the things that were said. Uh, we did have some concerns and some issues regarding landscaping and regarding signage, his property. Sonny has been very good at working with us to, to remedy those situations and, and make the, everything we've asked him for. So I, I will, I will vouch for, for his integrity in those regards, for sure.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for everybody's comment, everything. And only issue I have, like, I know you guys are all against the liquor on that property, especially on the Jeffrey Street. How many times, and how many people went to this place, tried to do a convenience store, and failed? So I'm, I'm a business person. I'm not gonna throw my money somewhere where I'm gonna fail. The liquor part is, that's what the people, that's our backup plan, is if something doesn't work, at least we have something to keep our door open. Second of all, I don't know, like, without liquor, we don't have no plan on this property. Like, food, we know, everybody know, just the one thing, the food is not gonna work. Just like Ricky Rocket, they bring a food, they bring a Wendy, they brought a marijuana place, they brought slot machines, they brought everything just for the backup plan. I be listening to you guys all the, you know, in, interview with everything. So, and particularly this place, like, we don't want to go for the grocery store, just for the grocery store and the food place. That's a lot of money. That's like, my franchise cost me a hundred twenty thousand dollar just to bring their name over there, crispy crunchy. So, plus, I gotta remodel this place, the whole thing, it need to be gutted, it need to get a new refrigerator, everything. So I don't want to put that much money in it, and I fail. So it's too much money to just come over there and just say, oh man, we don't make enough money, and we gotta close the doors. So that's the only thing I'm asking for. Packaged liquor behind the bu- behind us, it's not on the floor. The beer, of course, if you guys want it, we could serve single cases everywhere, like, I don't, I don't think any gas station have it. The beer is behind there, and the kids can walk up and open the door. I don't, I never saw that. I, we never saw that in our place, any kids open up the door and grab a beer. So I think every- So, I think everybody have a common sense on the, even in my kids, they only say I went on 6th, and I don't think they have any mind thoughts, like, they're gonna open up the beer cooler and grab a beer. So, that's the only thing I have to say. Plus, I saw the one comment, the person said, "We can never beat the KC prices and anybody." I can promise this person, if you come to our place, I don't think anybody can beat our prices. That's the first goal is in our plan, is giving the best price to our customers, to the community, so they don't have to spend extra money. They don't have to. So, that's my goal is.
Mr. Hunter?
Madam Chair, thank you very much. For the public and those individuals who are here who have given testimony regarding their opinion, this particular board, the planning board, is advising that particular recommendation will be made before the full council. The full council makes the final determination as to the status of the approval of the conditional use permit. So, I just want you guys to know, whatever vote they take tonight, that matter will be referred to the full council for consideration, and they'll make the ultimate decision.
Any other comments? If you could come forward, please.
We have a court reporter that's recording all this, so if you don't speak into the microphone, it doesn't get recorded, so.
I just want everybody to know, it's easily understood how everyone feel about their communities. Everyone's supporting on each side, but let it be known, no one should leave out of here with no ill feelings towards another person. We understand sometimes, you know, disputes happen and people get emotional about it, but at the end of the day, both sides are just speaking for what they feel and what they support. So, and it's understood, the community, they concerned about their community, but the police serve and protect, and whatever the community needs Sonny to do, he gonna do it. And like he said, if the ordinances is not adhered to, his license will be shut down. And one important thing that was left out, I believe the store will be closing somewhere around 10, 11, or 12 at night. It won't be open all night, and eventually get shut down. And thank everybody for speaking. We understand people didn't have peace in their neighborhood for a long time, but certain things is out of people's control. No matter where you at, where you from, people will do things we disagree with, but it should be all love with everybody.
Thank you. Go ahead, come forward and speak in the mic, please.
And if you would, just say your name real quick again for the court reporter, please.
Once again, Latrice Akero. I apologize, first off, for my hyperness. I get like that when I'm advocating for people. I heard people know that our pastors, which I am also, and it probably seems strange, why would a pastor stand up for a liquor license? It's not that I'm standing up for the liquor license, I'm standing up for somebody to be successful that desire that very thing. And if that very thing is what he desires, I stand up for somebody that is trying to make something happen for the community. Another thing, when they say that, "Oh, I don't stay over there. My daughter is open Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays, but we in there the rest of the week, whether you may see a car or not." I never seen no prostitutes up and down this street, no crack addicts. My mother stays on Washington Street, two blocks down, the 900 block. I'm there every day. My daughter stays, it's either 800 block or something like that. I'm there every day. I see other people hanging out in other sides of Kankakee, but I don't understand the problem of people just trying to succeed. You can go on Jewel's and get liquor, a kid. You can go into any grocery store, Walmart, get liquor. The kids can take it, steal it, 'cause Walmart don't do too much watching. But, we against something that he's trying to do. I'm sitting back there, and people are, I mean, disrespecting bad. And I understand you got the 20 that agree in the neighborhood and the 4 that's against it, and then you got the 20 that disagree, the 40 that agree. But, nobody has put money in his pocket to make this happen. He not asking nobody in this room to do anything. He didn't go to the church to ask for your money to do anything. He's saying, "I'm pulling this money out of my pocket." So, all I'm asking y'all is to consider, don't have a hardened heart when you make your decision, 'cause a lot of times when we make decisions, we make decisions based off what everybody else is saying. We make the decisions based off, "Well, I stayed in this neighborhood," and then that's all y'all are hearing. Do not make a decision with a hardened heart based off what everybody is saying about because they stay in the neighborhood. Make it based off, they bringing all these other businesses in the community, and he's bringing one. Don't deny him, but then say yes to everybody else. That wouldn't be right.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna take one more comment, and if you could come to the mic, please.
You know, one thing about, one thing about this whole thing, I hear you, we, how many, you know, it just vex my spirit. I see people come to my church. I done got people delivered just by preaching the word, just by preaching the gospel. And these pastors, I'm looking at, you know, I'm not judging, but I'm looking at you. We see people coming in our church broken from drug abuse, and we have to use the power and strength that God has given us, and the ability that God has given us, to pray for these people, to get them through their alcohol addiction, to get them through their drug habits. I got so many testimonies at my church that people had walked in, couldn't get off of alcohol, been on alcohol for years, but after coming under my ministry, people have been delivered from drugs. People have been delivered from drinking, and said they'll never go back. They never wanna touch alcohol anymore. So, if we gonna continue to let alcohol come forth, it don't only make our job harder, but it make, it gonna make it hard for the city, too, 'cause the city gotta keep dealing with more crime, more crime, more crime, more crime. Now, I'm listening at pastor, I can't read in my Bible where the Bible said condone drinking, where it said condone alcohol. I see it in the Bible where we are to try to get these people's lives transformed from a drunker, or from an alcoholic, or from drug user, a woman prostituting herself. I got people that, but at the same time, at the same time, they think we are going against this man, we are warring against this man. No, I'm not, but I just know, in order to clean up one life and clean up one city, you must take control of the drugs and alcohol. That's all I got.
Pastor, 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 you're out of order. You are out of order. Pastor, you are out of order. The public hearing is closed. Mr. Singh?
Yes, ma'am.
Deb Terrell here. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Your store over on East Side?
Yes.
Is it also a package store?
Yes.
It is, okay. It's a nice place.
Thank you.
I had never seen it until yesterday.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Do you, you're on site every day there?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm wondering how you'll be on site at both stores?
We gotta, you know, teamwork. We don't just, I can't be, I got a couple other places, too, anyways. I got a store in Onaga, too, on Gilman. I got a family people, I got teamwork. We don't, I can't be in it every hour in that site. So, we got a teamwork that family person or somebody always gonna be there. So, if you have any question, any problem, somebody right in there, they gotta take care of it. There's no if and but, you gotta come tomorrow or nothing, it's gotta taking care right away. It's any problem you guys will have.
Thank you. Can you tell me, too, what portion of your business is liquor sales?
On where?
What percentage of your business is liquor sales compared to food sales?
Over there, we have, like, I could say 70%. Yeah, so 30% is all food and, you know, grocery, snacks, and stuff like that. Yeah.
I have a question. This is Steve Case. My question's from Mike, and I apologize, it's a very ignorant question, perhaps. We've heard a lot about the credibility of Mr. Singh, and I'm just curious, are we giving a conditional use permit to Mr. Singh personally? What happens if Westside Groceries and Liquor comes under new management, or if the business is sold and has new ownership? How does that work?
That is a very good question, actually. And typically, when you grant a conditional use, it goes with the property, right? So, like, if a new owner comes in, they still have that conditional use. Now, you do have, I have seen some communities tie a conditional use to that owner. So, if you do that in the writing of the conditional use, if that ownership changes, then they would have to come back before you and essentially renew the conditional use. So, if you don't say anything, it goes with the land, and it's just with the property. If you write it into the conditional use specifically as a condition, then it could be attached to the owner.
Any other questions?
Question on hours. What are your hours?
Oh, 5:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Yes, 11:00, 11:00 at night. Yes.
First thing. What is meant by liquor will be not seen, it'll be behind something?
It will be behind the cashier. So, you have to actually ask for it, what do you need? But, the beer is gonna be on the cooler, but all the liquor is gonna be behind the cashier.
The cooler doors can be open?
Yes, it's all the way to the corner.
I mean, I understand that, it's just, there's glass open, so I can reach my hand and get...
Yeah, just like you go to store, you grab a pop or any drinks, that will be the beer access to.
I have a question, Arturo Barajas. You said you paid $250,000 on property taxes. Is that for one business, or?
Just one business on the Maple Street. That's what we generated last year, so I'm hoping, praying to God, we're gonna do a more.
Yeah, it's pretty nice. I see it all.
Yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate it. So, we're planning on, on that site, we probably will bring a half a million dollar tax revenue on that site from there.
That's all taxes, sales tax, property tax, everything?
All sale tax.
Mr. Lass? Mr. Lass?
When you have this business going, or the other ones that you have going, have you purchased property in other communities?
Yes, I own the house, actually, right here in Kankakee.
You've had, you have facilities in other communities? Did you close them and sell them?
No, sir. We had, I had a gas station and before, I've been in this area for almost over 10 years. We, I used to own the gas station on 604 South Indiana Avenue and another one, 330 South Nelson Avenue.
Did you sell those, or you still?
I actually had a lease over there for 10 years, so it's over, so somebody else got it now. Yes, now I purchased a property over there on 1612 East Maple, then 580, then I own the house on 566 South Harrison Avenue.
I wasn't concerned about house ownership. I'm concerned about, can you, if you built a facility, not physical facility, but the business facility, and then it got to a high enough level to, it was impressive to sell it, subsequently, you sold it for another project that you wanted to invest in?
Actually, that was my plan on 1612 East Maple. That's why, you know, the lease was over, so I didn't, my kids actually go to school here, so I didn't wanna pick my kids up and leave from this town. So, you know, I have a bond with my customer, it's like, they treat me like family, I treat them like family. So, I didn't wanna pick up and leave, so that's why I invested my money on the Maple. Now, I'm investing my money on the Jeffrey.
What was your, what were you in business at before you came to Kankakee?
I had a store in Onaga. Before, we had, and I was working over there in Bradley Kinsey Liquor on Route 50.
Okay, I asked Kankakee, I mean, did you have one in champagne or something?
No, sir. I've been around this area for moments to here, 18 years.
This is Steve Case again. I'm sorry, Mr. Singh, I have a question, and I think I probably know the answer to it, 'cause I think you said it earlier, but based on your own, your business model, you heard from the immediate community that they don't want another liquor store?
Yes.
Do you think it's viable as a business to give the community what they want without selling what they don't want?
Yes, I feel like, can I get it one chance? Let me approve it, what we can do. Just like we asked for a chance in Maple, we proved to everybody, what we bring it to the table. We brought it, whatever we said, the crime rate, we never had a problem, we never had an issue. We kept it clean. Any concern Mike Hoffman have, he always email me, "Hey, we need this one done. It's get done less than whatever time they're giving me." So, we get it right on it, so we just ask for a chance. If something like, everybody say, if something we doing wrong, you guys always have an option to pull my license. If anything going wrong, you guys don't like it, it happened here in Kankakee before, so.
But, just so I'm clear, you don't feel like it's viable to open this business as just a convenience store? You don't believe that the business will succeed without...
I feel like so many people fail in that specific place, so I don't wanna fail into the same category. That's a lot of money to be just say, "Pick up and leave." Thank you.
Anyone else, or are we ready to quiet?
Madam Chairman, I'm ready to act. I'm gonna make a kind of a lengthy statement first, I'm sorry to say. In deference to all the people who came here tonight, I'd like to explain the motion that I'm about to make. As Alderman Hunter pointed out, we are a recommending body to City Council. This is not our decision to make, but we recommend to City Council what we think they should do. Whether or not they do that is up to them. I believe in the process. I came here tonight very much opposed to this. This is in my neck of the woods, and I really don't think we need another liquor store in our neighborhood. However, the process is beautiful. I've been on this board for over 25 years, and I know at this point that you never should make a decision about a case until you've heard all of the testimony, you've heard what everybody has to say, and my mind has sort of been shifted here tonight, thanks mostly to the eloquence of three of our former Aldermen, Tyler Tall, Carl Brown, Stevie Hunter. You have all spoken very eloquently on behalf of Mr. Singh and his family, and it has made an impression on me. I believe at this point that we should let the process play out, that I would like to stand behind this man and his dreams and his visions for this store on the West Side. I would like to see that viable again. Would like to see it looking good. Right now, it's a mess, and if we deny this request, guess what? It's just gonna sit there like it is now. I'm not as concerned about the high school as I was about the proximity to a halfway house and to the model motel, which is a voucher motel, as everyone knows, but, you know, the people at the halfway house could go two blocks the other direction to the liquor zone, too. So it's, you know, it's kind of a moot point. I was also thinking, as everyone was talking, about the things that I see. I hang out downtown at night a lot. During COVID, my girlfriends and I started meeting down at the gazebo just to spend time together and be outdoors where we felt safe, and we've never stopped. And I spend a great deal of time down there. My husband also fishes down at the dam every single day of his life. Gets down there early in the morning, he sees the street people down there that are waiting for the liquor zone, or the other liquor store now that's reopened, to open. Then they bring their alcohol and they come down to the dam, and they play loud music, and they get drunk, and they get quarrelsome, and there are fights, and there's vandalism. And I see that at the gazebo, I see it at the depot, I see it just about every place. I have a secret place now that we hang out, where the street people haven't found us yet. I too get tired of being painhandled and harassed, and yes, some of them are very aggressive. But, that being said, there are no public spaces within a few blocks of this place. There's no benches and park setting, no gazebo, no shelters, no outlets for them to plug their cell phones in, things like that. That has to be taken into consideration. There are certain places where they're more comfortable than others, and there isn't really a comfortable place for people to hang out in close proximity to this store. So, all that being said, I would like to make motion that we recommend approval. Now, oh, I, one more thing I'd like to add. We have eight recommendations here that we will attach to this conditional use permit that include everything from the way they can light the property to security cameras. You will hear them as I read them. So we have so many layers here of this process. It goes to City Council, they get to decide about the liquor license. We have these conditions that we can attach. So I'm going to make a leap of faith on behalf of this family and propose this motion that we recommend approval of a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of a liquor store at five eighty West Jeffrey Street by Westside Groceries and Liquor. I attach all the findings as outlined by the Planning Department in our packet along with the following conditions. Those conditions are, number one, all requirements of the City of Kankakee Fire Department, the Kankakee County Health Department, and the City of Kankakee Code Enforcement shall be satisfied prior to the commencement of the business operation. The applicant shall obtain a City of Kankakee business license prior to commencement of the business operation. The applicant shall obtain and maintain a City of Kankakee liquor license prior to operation of business. The applicant shall submit a detailed plan for the landscape improvements, very dear to my heart, I'll be watching.
Thank you.
And screening of the dumpster, uh, for the review and approval of the city planner. Temporary signs, banners, commercial flags, LED light strips, and similar devices are prohibited, except as individually approved by the city planner based on our sign code. Window signage, including open and closed signs in business hours, shall occupy less than fifty percent of the window space. Windows shall remain untinted to allow law enforcement personnel to have a clear and unobstructed view of the interior of the store. Security surveillance cameras shall be installed and maintained in good working order to provide coverage on a twenty-four hour real-time basis. Cameras shall remain active at all times and be capable of operating under any lighting conditions. Security video must use standard industry format to support criminal investigations and shall be maintained for a minimum of sixty days. And I'm adding number eight, which is that this conditional use permit be attached to Mr. Singh and the Westside Grocery and Liquor Store business. That means that if he shuts down or anything happens, the CUP goes away.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Deb Terrell, and a second by Chip Roarum. Any questions, residents? Roll call.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Roarum?
Yes.
Arthur Lacks?
No.
Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Stephen Case?
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
No.
All right, that is five yes, two no, so that will go forward to the City Council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you so much, thank you so much, everybody.
Next case, PB twenty twenty-three six-two. Request for major variance from private driveways.
You might take a two-minute pause.
We'll take a two-minute pause, we'll take two-minute pause.
Three pregnant births over here, appreciate it. I'm on my side.
I will.
Lopez, hey. All right. Well, it'd be seen and viewed, yeah, well, we're just so proud of it.
Right?
You know, but he's, he's the real deal. He's who he said he is. But we gotta make sure we got eight on the council. Yep. That's right, it's not personalities and other, other prostitutes and... We had another two, for the ancillary stuff. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Good to see ya.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. Las Vegas, Mariano? Thanks, appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
We're gonna go ahead and get started again. Case number PB twenty twenty-three dash six dash two. Request for a major variance from private driveways construction requirements in section thirty dash ninety in the municipal code to allow a gravel drive-in place of pavement at three zero zero five Festival Drive by SV CSG Kensington One LLC. State your name and this warning.
David Mason.
Sure, tell truth, Dave.
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. Um, on behalf of, uh, the Triangle CSG Solar Project, we are seeking approval on our variance request to install a gravel driveway in lieu of a asphalt driveway, um, per the municipal code. Um, as shown in the site plans, um, that Mike has up here on the screen, the current plans do indicate a asphalt apron to be installed at the site entrance. The, the apron's approximately eighteen feet in length, and the gravel driveway would commence just to the west of that asphalt apron. Lastly, following the construction activities on the site, the driveways are typically utilized four to five times a year by our, uh, operations and maintenance teams. And on, as part of those visits, you know, for routine, uh, site inspections and, and, uh, maintenance needs. Happy to take any, uh, questions at this time.
Commissioners, any questions?
So, um, what portion of this, what percentage, more or less, of this whole property will be paved over?
So the, the gravel access drive, um, is approximately six hundred feet in length, and that's on the, the south end of the site, and that would be in gravel. The, the actual asphalt area would be limited to the apron, and that's approximately eighteen feet in length. So basically, between the property line and Festival Drive, whatever.
Do we consider gravel a permeable surface?
No, I mean, gravel, water will, gravel eventually will compact and water's just gonna run off of it for the most part. I mean, it's a little more permeable than concrete, but not much.
That's my only concern about this, is the loss of permeable surface, because you've got the solar panels covering, you know, a great deal of the surface. Uh, I guess the water does just run off of them into the ground.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we did have a full site plan review, and it's been approved by the city engineer in terms of drainage, so... Whether it's gravel or asphalt in terms of drainage, it's really not gonna make much difference.
Yeah, Neil Piggos and his team, uh, they've performed a site plan review during the permit process.
Chip Roarum, I have, I have a question on decommissioning. Gravel driveway part of the decommissioning, removal of the gravel driveway part of the decommissioning process?
It is, as well as the, um, the proposed asphalt apron that, that would be removed as part of our decommissioning, yep.
And this is what, at twenty-five years?
Uh, between twenty-five and thirty years, the, the landowners have, typically, there's an option for the, uh, those final five years, but between twenty-five and thirty is the useful life.
But it can be extended too, can it not?
That's right, yeah.
And it could be, you could go to fifty?
Um, we'd have to renegotiate the leases with the landowners, but, yeah.
But at the end, at the end of the term, the, the support is for the solar and then driveway, everything like that is removed?
Correct, yeah.
In the asphalt area?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we also have a, uh, an agreement with the state of Illinois, the AMA, which, which also requires, you know, they have certain, uh, regulations in there on the decommissioning. Um, and that we have the decommissioning plan and, and bond in place with the city.
Yeah, just for clarity, Chip, they did submit a decommissioning plan, and the city has approved that, so...
I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Seeing that there are none, I will go ahead and call the public hearing. Commissioners, any other questions? Are we ready to add?
Yes.
Regard to PB number two zero two-three dash six dash two, a request for major variance from private driveways construction requirements in section thirty dash ninety in the municipal code to allow gravel drive in place of pavement at three thousand five Festival Drive by SV CSG Kensington One, comma, LLC. We move to allow the variance from a asphalt drive on the site beyond the turnoff, the asphalt turnoff that is mandated. Uh, we, we move that the asphalt drive, uh, be replaced with a gravel drive. And... Acknowledging the recommendation that this is a, is a unique long access drive, and it will generally be removed, uh, at the end of the service term of the solar farm.
We have a second?
Second? Give it to the new guy.
So we have a motion by Chip Roarum, and a second by Deb Terrell. Any questions? Roll call.
Chip Roarum? Steve Case?
Yes.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Arthur Lacks? Susan Lopez?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Your variance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Case PB twenty twenty-three dash seven dash one. Request for a map amendment to rezone one seventy-eight South Evergreen Avenue, ten twenty-three through ten seventy-five East Merchant Street, odd addresses only, and ten ninety-seven through eleven eighty-five East Merchant Street, odd addresses only, one forty-seven West Oak Street, two oh three through two eighty-three Northwest Avenue, odd addresses only, one forty-two, one forty-one, one twenty-nine West Chestnut Street, three oh one through three 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 Northwest Avenue, odd addresses only from commercial to residential zoning.
Hopefully, the hardest part of this will be actually reading all those addresses. No, so we, we've had multiple cases like this, right? Where we have got property that is in town, that is zoned commercially, but it either has homes and usually has had homes on it for quite a number of years. Uh, this is in two areas, we're proposing this right now. Uh, this is along Merchant, just north of the, uh, the King, Martin Luther King Park. Uh, we actually got a call from the owner of this property right here, uh, actually, an architect for that property. Uh, they wanna rehab that and return it to a, to a good single-family home. Uh, need to do significant work on it, need to get a loan. Can't get a loan because it's zoned commercially, uh, and can't be rebuilt if there's, there's a significant damage to the property. So, uh, they wanted to rezone that property. I said, well, we've got a whole strip there that's zoned commercially and probably should be residential, so let's, let's treat that as a city application. We did, if you recall, uh, rezone the property right here on the corner of Elm and Merchant sometime last year, uh, for a similar situation, a resident was looking to sell that property and needed to, to, to get it legal conforming. Uh, so we rezoned that one parcel, now we're looking to rezone that strip essentially. Uh, the end of it down here is vacant property right now. Uh, there is, um, a couple of duplexes, we've got a piece right now that's zoned our two here, uh, and we do have two families, uh, adjacent to it. So what we're proposing is our, our two zoning for the structures that are currently uh, two-family and our one single-family for everything else there along Merchant that you see, uh, illustrated in the packet and on the screen. Then if you want to jump to, and this is just a picture of some of the homes that you see along that street right now. Then if you looked along West Avenue, it was a similar situation. A person was looking to purchase one of these properties, and again, was having trouble getting loans, uh, for the purchase because, again, it's illegal non-conforming use. So all that property along West Avenue there is currently zoned, uh, commercial and in some cases industrial, um, but it is all residential. Now, the condition of some of these homes and structures, if you've driven along there, isn't the best right now. Uh, and probably, part of the reason is, is it's not properly zoned, right? So if they put the money into rehabbing it, they're risking that money because if something happens to it and there's a fire... if something happens to it and there's a fire, it can't get rebuilt, right? So, what we're looking to do is rezone the properties along this strip as well. Again, this is a situation where we have a mix of different types of units. Most of them are single-family, but there are a couple of duplexes in the area. The one I am proposing to you, this one is a duplex right now. I'm, at least for now, suggesting single-family for that one because it is a pretty small lot. It's only about thirty-three thousand square feet or so and I would really like to see duplex lots be the larger kind of full-size lots, given the density and parking requirements for those things and everything else. But everything else, we are suggesting, as you see on that illustration on the right, so if it's brown, we're suggesting R two, if it's yellow, we're suggesting single-family or R one as the rezoning. So, with that, I will conclude my comments and be more than happy to answer any questions you guys have got. I didn't, the only calls I received on this one were the one gentleman that was looking to, to rezone his property because he was trying to remodel it.
I'll open it up for the public hearing in case someone has any questions or comments or would like to speak for or against. Public's hearing is closed. And we're going to take a motion.
I'd like to make a comment before that happens. Chip Roeram, I am very encouraged by what's going on with this work, with our zoning ordinance. It does allow us to open the door to creating generations. Prior to this work, we could not do that. These houses need work and their opportunities for wealth for their families.
True. A motion to...
So, Chip, would you, you wanna convert that into a motion to elect a bed, something?
Here I am, chatting away.
Okay, y'all. Okay, in regards to P B two zero two three dash seven dash one, of all of those addresses. I suppose I should read them.
No, we don't have to read all addresses. She covered it, we're good.
I move that we accept the recommendation of SDAF to convert these commercial properties to residential properties, either R one or R two, as designated by the maps.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Chip Roeram and a second by Steve Case. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Chip Roeram.
Yes.
Steve Case.
Yes.
Jose Arturo Brajas.
Yes.
Susan Lopez.
Yes.
Arthur Lacks.
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
All right, that is recommended positively to the city council.
Case, P B twenty twenty-three dash seven dash two, request for a conditional use permit to operate a liquor store at 330 South Nelson Avenue, Gas Depot, Zone C two by M. Hatcher Martz LLC. Would the applicant or advocates please come forward?
Hello, my name is Charlie McCarthy. I'm representing the owners of the property that's in question here. I thought, I wanted to make sure that Alderman Jones wasn't leaving. I saw him moving. First of all, the actual application that was submitted by TESCA to the board here, there's been continual reference in every, and everything has been written about this property, that my clients want to open a liquor store. That is not the case. They have a convenience store. The way the application is written and slanted, it would appear that they want to open up a store to sell nothing but liquor. I have more to say about the actual amount of shelf space, which will be approximately eight percent of the entire store locale that will have beer, wine, and liquor. So, it is definitely not a liquor store. You know, for years, I had a laser pointer and never used it. And I mean, this is the perfect opportunity. One of the concerns, and one of the major concerns in the past, and my clients have been denied in the past, I'm sure you have that information, has been the traffic flow and it's because of the unusual configuration of where the property is. I don't know how else to do it other than to walk up and point, oh, somebody's got a, where's that coming from?
Right here.
Oh. Wonderful, thank you. That's terrific.
Do you, I do have two images. You want this one or do you want the more zoomed-in version of the photo?
I'm sorry?
I have a more zoomed-in image of the site, if you want, or you want this larger view?
I think that's the perfect size.
Okay.
How do I, how do I get it to work? Oh, there we go. This, of course, is the property. This is Nelson. This is Maple. One of the objections is that it's a difficult, the property, the property is difficult to access from these streets. In fact, that's not true. If you're coming southbound on Nelson, you have, you get to the point, there is a light here that has a dedicated green arrow to the left and a dedicated green going south. If you're coming down, if you make a left turn, you have two driveways to access the property. These are the gas station canopies. If you continue on down Nelson, you have two opportunities, right there and there. So, there certainly is no impediment to traffic. You got two left turns here, you got two right turns here. If you're going north, you've got the exact opposite. You have two right turns to get into the property. The only difficult turn would be if someone were going north on Nelson to make this obtuse angle turn, but why would they do that when they have a driveway here and a driveway there? If, even if, for traffic considerations, if they want to go south on Nelson, they've got streets down here that is coming up, they would turn over to here as opposed to making this difficult turn. If you're headed eastbound on Maple, obviously you have the same two approaches here or you can make a right turn and then two left turns. So, access to the property coming eastbound is definitely facilitated. And going westbound, you've got the same two driveways here. I don't know why anybody, if they're going to the property, would, would come around this way, but even so, they've got two driveways if they want to make that turn. So, the, the traffic situation, the comments that have been made in the past is that having the ability to sell liquor, beer, wine, and liquor would increase traffic. Now, the gentleman you heard before, who is a cousin of my clients, has this store right here and he has beer, wine, liquor, he has gaming, and he has a large parking, parking lot there. So, they are, my clients and the person that first spoke, they are cousins. So, it's kind of a family, a family corner, if you will. Give me a moment here. It is a family-owned business. Here tonight is the mother, the father, and the two sons who own the store and they asked me to speak because of their inability to converse in English. I mean, they, they can converse in English, but not eloquently, so they asked me to do it. Not that I'm doing much better, but, you know, nonetheless, they asked me to do it. There is, only family works there. They're open from six in the morning till eleven o'clock at night and it's, it's only family. They don't have any other workers. It is a convenience store. Again, the comments keep saying liquor store. It is not a liquor store. It's a convenience store. They sell milk, they sell bread, they sell mops, they sell mousetraps, they sell canned goods. They sell, of course, pop and Gatorade and things of that nature, newspapers. It's a bodega, to use a New York term. So, the store right now is a fully functional store and they have to make room and they did extensive measurements inside as to how much they would dedicate to offering liquor, which of course would be behind the counter, and beer and wine. The point is that as a convenience store, what are they doing? They're offering people in the neighborhood an opportunity to buy a six-pack of beer or a bottle of wine to have with their dinner. Their traffic is roughly twenty-five percent is foot traffic. People from the neighborhood that don't necessarily drive there, they walk in. And I'll comment on that in a moment because I went there tonight to talk with them before we came here and while I was there for twenty minutes, they had at least five customers come in that were from the neighborhood. They had walked there. Well, how do I know that? Because the entire property is torn up. They're installing new gas tanks. And if you've driven by there lately, you'll see a big clam digger sitting there. They're waiting on the EPA report for the soil before they can dig up the soil and install the new tanks. The new tanks, actually, the new tanks are sitting... Okay? Well, they're sitting right next to their cousin's store. They're piled up on the, right, that's exactly where they are. Thank you. Maybe the battery's must have gone out. So, in order to even get to the store tonight, they had to walk on a three-foot wide walkway just to get to the, to the front door. And I thought to myself, "That's interesting because they didn't drive here. There's no place to park." So, it's a convenience store that serves the neighborhood. They do not sell any marijuana products. They strictly sell sundries is probably the, the best, the best way to describe it. There's no tight turns to get in. There really is not a traffic problem. And certainly with the addition of eight percent of shelf space for beer, wine, and liquor is not going to increase traffic. They have the cousin store next door that sells liquor. They have, to the immediate south of it, there's been a restaurant that's been licensed for liquor sales. They're kind of in a squeeze. They're the only one that doesn't offer it. So, someone from the neighborhood, if they want to buy a six-pack of beer, they've got to go to another store. It truly would be a convenience for them to offer beer, wine, and liquor. Again, on a limited basis, they do not intend to have a liquor store. The concerns that have been expressed in the past about the, the ambiance of the neighborhood, if you will, directly across Maple is a vacant lot. Actually, there's a couple of vacant lots there. The residential area is immediately to the west and there are, there are homes there, but again, this particular gas station has been there for years. As a matter of fact, the number one speaker owned it. I think he testified it is 330 South Maple. And he used to own it and he sold it to the, to the family, if you will. So, to the southeast, you've got the approval of liquor and gaming and my clients have no intention of applying for a gaming license or anything else. They simply want to offer, as a convenience to their customers, the ability to sell beer and wine. And... Am I cut off or?
No, you can keep going.
Oh, sorry.
I thought that was a signal. Stop talking.
Sorry, but...
Okay, the south, I'm sorry, did I do something there? The proprietors have no intention to offer consumption on, on the premises. It definitely would not be allowed. There's simply no place to do it. I mean, the store is, is crammed with sundries from stem to stern and they obviously would not allow any consumption on the property whatsoever. And that definitely has an influence on the neighborhood ambiance. They have had no problems with drugs, with police fights or loitering since they've been there, which has been approximately two years. I want to point out, they sell gas. Everybody, well, except for the people that walk there, everybody needs gas. And if they go to the gas station, "Oh, let me run in and get, get the loaf of bread and a quart of milk and yeah, I'll buy myself a six-pack." I mean, that would be the convenience that they offer their, their customers. And their gas price, I don't know how many of you have been by there, but their gas price is consistently lower than any of the surrounding stations. You go down Court Street and look at the prices that are being charged there and this gas depot, one, one block south, is consistently less money. Now, they've got two huge tanks coming in there and I think they need them because people go in there to buy gas because it is cheaper, less expensive. The presentation of the store to the public, to the city of Kankakee, obviously, right now, it's a disaster. There's a big mound of dirt and all this machinery, but they haven't done landscaping as has been suggested. But they haven't done landscaping, as has been suggested, for the application, because it would have to be torn up. So they're waiting until they get the tanks in and get that finished, and they intend to put in all the recommendations that have been made for the property. Obviously, they're not going to do it while it's being torn up. They obviously are concerned with the community. They're concerned with their own business to make money. The addition of a liquor license will help increase their profits, as everyone knows, that is definitely a bottom-line benefit. They were turned down, and there were specific reasons why they were turned down, and they've adjusted and changed what they needed to change to appear before you tonight. So they are definitely interested in improving the site and being a good neighbor to their neighbors. Again, the store is 1,560 square feet. In the application, it said 1,600. I like to be exact. The... The site has been referred to as a non-traditional intersection. Absolutely, it's non-traditional, but, you know, from my way of thinking, it's actually easier to access this site for people to come in and access those two gas station islands than traditional gas stations. And they do a good business selling gas because they sell it cheaper. Obviously, it is a retail situation where they are selling all kinds of things. The suggestions that have been made in the past to get the city fire department, they already have a certificate from the fire department, the county health department has been issued them a certificate, and the code enforcement division has been there and issued it, so that's all taken care of. Obviously, the liquor license is something that needs to be taken care of, and that's why we're here. The parking lot standards, there are parking spaces right at the apex of the obtuse angle. Let's see if I can get this to work again.
Hold on to that top part.
Oh, there we go. Okay, you've got to hold on to it. The parking area, there's parking in front of the store here, there's parking over on the side here, you see where these lines are drawn? And it's all been measured out, and there's parking up here that, you know, conforms to, I believe it's a nine-by-18 for a parking spot. I don't know if anybody can confirm that, or...
I can't confirm it, because it was...
But it's been measured, and, you know, the required parking spots will be taken care of. A privacy fence on the southern part, if we could thank you, that would be right along here. Again, that hasn't been put up because they wanted to wait until the construction. Right now, there is a fence that goes along here, over to here, up, and I mean, there's no access to the property, except right here. The front door of the store is there. But the privacy fence is not a problem to put up, they definitely want to do that. And a trash enclosure, right now, they have the trash over here, and that's a simple matter to put that up. Again, I think right now, the clam digger is parked over here. They have no temporary signs, commercial flags, led light strips, et cetera. And they have, the security cameras have been installed and maintained, and I believe the code enforcement group has indicated that that's copacetic with what they require. The current alderman for this property, which I think six months ago was a different alderperson, but we have the support of Mr. Jones, who I believe is here to speak this evening as soon as I run out of gas. And let me just check. The written notification of property owners has taken place. I have, if the panel would like to peruse it, I have the printout of an Excel spreadsheet that shows all the property owners that were notified about this hearing. And I'm not sure if they emailed anything in or sent letters in, but it's available for your perusal.
Yeah, he emailed me copies of the green cards.
I'm sorry?
The applicant emailed me copies of the cards that are for certified mail, so we're fine on the notifications.
And the actual notices to what was sent to them as well. So they certainly, and they posted the red warning sign, red warning sign notifying everybody again of this public hearing. So those, the notification for the property owners has taken place. They published the legal notice, I have a copy that was published in the Kankakee Journal, if you care to peruse that. And there has been posted a public hearing notice sign on the property. So I believe that my clients have followed what's required with the law, and I would request that you submit a positive recommendation to the city council to allow a liquor license for my clients.
Commissioners, any questions?
I don't know if this is a question. Deb Terrell here, so much as it is a concern, there aren't six parking spaces there. There aren't three parking spaces there. And if you allow for landscaping going in there too, it's going to be even less room. There, I've been to that gas station many times, because it is cheaper. All the gas depots are cheaper. No, there's no six parking spaces there, that's fiction.
Well, if you look, if you look here, part of the problem is there's a trash container here. Now, I know that my clients have parked there, there's one, two, there's three there, there is, there is two in front of the store itself, and then when you go up, there's, in that triangle, there's one there. Now, the cement has been pretty, like, up here. The cement has been, you know, worn away, and there used to be actual yellow lines for the parking spots. And there is a bumper right there for the two parking spots.
I appreciate that, but there's a difference between being able to physically place a car in a given amount of space and being able to pull in and pull out, to back up and get out safely. There aren't six parking spaces that allow ingress and egress into that site. There just aren't. And the reason that that's important is that we would have to grant also a variance to reduce the number of parking spaces.
Well, all I can say is that we've looked at it and measured, obviously, if you come in to get gas, we haven't considered those to be parking spaces, okay? The parking spaces would be for the convenience store. And, I mean, we can supply a survey showing where those parking spaces should be, if that's what, you know, you would like to see.
Yeah, Chip Rohr, the survey would resolve some of the concerns. This is a pretty vague representation of the...
I recognize that, those are hand-drawn spaces, but actually, we measured it, and...
But, you know, but having property lines and clearances and roadways and stuff like that, that a civil engineer could look at and say that would work, would help a great deal. One of the other things that I've run into, if your trash is being picked up by a front dumpster...
Front loader, they need access to the...
65 feet. They need 65 feet for a truck to come in and come right down and grab it and pick it up and throw it over the table. So that has to be, so that travel, you know, might put you in a situation where some of those spots where you have them located might have to go to the dumpster instead of the parking.
Well, we've...
Those are things that a flash survey could assist in us understanding better what, how it gets solved.
We've discussed that, and on this side of the building, right here, we have, it's property that, you know, the plant, if you could move that up just a hair, this is not, we haven't counted any parking spaces here, but this is part of the property here. So we would move the trash from there over to here, which would give a truck, a front loader, you know, access to it with no problem.
Do you know whether or not the islands for the pumps and the aprons, the concrete aprons around them, are going to be the same size and the same footprint as the old ones? I would be surprised if they were.
Why is that? I'm not...
Because that limits parking spaces as well.
Well, the actual canopies here, they have the stone island, if you will, and the pumps would go on the islands, I'm assuming. The pumps are not, you know, 1920 pumps, I mean, they were fairly big pumps. And I don't anticipate any problem with having to have a bigger island. Even if there were a bigger island, and the pumps are there, but there's cars in the way, so you can't really see, perhaps the next picture, there, you can see, there's plenty of room to put in a bigger island for the pumps.
Where is the landscaping going to go?
Sorry?
Where is the landscaping going to be placed?
The only place where there's any green grass, if you will, is along the parkway, and that's it. And this is all cement here.
So I'm assuming you don't have a landscape plan?
We wanted to wait until the tanks are in to see exactly, measure exactly what's there after the cement is done. Independent, it would be, for purposes, to have a landscape plan now, looking at the property.
Yeah, the point is about the parking spaces. And since there are all of these balls in the air, all of these variables, I don't see how you can make a case for six parking spaces when we don't know what portion of it's going to be island and apron, we don't know what portion of it's going to be landscaping, we don't know whether you're going to have access to your dumpster. It's just a lot of variables and a lot of questions.
Well, we don't have access to the dumpster along the side right here, if we go back to the area of view.
Charlie.
Right here.
If you would just speak in the microphone for our court reporter, I'd appreciate it, thanks.
Also, before you proceed, Charlie, I'm going to open it up for public here, because there's some folks in the back that want to assist you with responding to some of the questions. So if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against this case, if you could go ahead and come forward and state your name, please.
My name is Arship Singh, I'm the son of the owner. The comments about the garbage truck, the garbage truck comes in at 4:00 a.m., our hours are from 6:00 to 11:00. So there's no, like, you know, point of time where the cars are going to be in front of the, you know, garbage trucks or anything.
Good point.
Yeah. The cars currently, the, I mean, the, what were you saying, the islands, it's going to be the same size.
They are.
Yeah, it's going to be same size, same pumps, we're going to be getting brand-new pumps, those are on the way and everything, so that whole parking lot is being redone. And those lines that you see, I drew them, I just didn't know how to do it myself, I'm not really good with techie stuff. But those are going to be drawn in with the, like, you know, the yellow lines and everything in those conditions. The, it's going to be, you know, we're going to make sure that it's done right, like, everything is being done by the book, and we're trying to make sure that we're doing it completely right and not making any, you know, small mistakes. So we just want to make sure, because this is our family store, this is our bread and butter, we're just trying to make sure that we can get our liquor license. The other store, the other liquor license, liquor store that opened up, I think it was two years ago, it has affected our business by a large margin. I think our lottery sale is down, I think, 70 percent or 60 percent, something like that. It took a large chunk of our, all of our sales, actually. And people are opting to go there, and with liquor, we're just trying to see if we can get some of our revenue back. So it's just like that. I mean, all of our customers know us, they, we just talk to them, it's easy, they said they're fine, and, you know, we did it, we're doing our due diligence, but, you know, we're just pushing for the best plan we can here.
I have a question, my name is Arturo Barajas. I'm just wondering, why is the reason that you're changing the gas tanks to...
They were at the end of their life, there's like a certain amount of time that the tanks can sit. So we got the station two years ago, and that's when we learned that the tanks need to go, that they're about to be at the end. And as soon as we learned, we ordered the tanks, I think it took us 22 months for the tanks to come in. So as soon as we learned it, we got the new tanks and the pumps and everything. It was just because there is a limit to, you know, and everything can last.
It seems to me that they're a little bit bigger than the old ones?
Yeah, we're currently going from 4,000 gallons to 18,000. So we're going up in size a lot, because we anticipated a lot of business in this location. So previously, we did have some issues with our premium tank, which was, I think, a 2,000 gallon, so we just turned it off. That was like, as soon as we got in, we realized that these tanks, the regular gas, the 87 was good, right, that tank is okay, but it, you know, I think it only has like a year or two left after this, so we might as well. And the premium, as soon as we learned it needed to go, we didn't even turn it on, no one was even able to use it. And so we just got rid of all of them. The kerosene pump had an issue, we just decided to get rid of the kerosene pump, make that regular pump now. The kerosene tank's also same issue, we just never used it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Parliament, Lance Marzak again. I believe originally, there was a question on distance in regard to the school. Has that been resolved? I don't, you know...
Well, so there is a state law that says that the liquor store has to be 100 feet from any school property, right? There is, I think, some open debate about whether that distance is measured from the property line, which is how I would do it, or from the door. We disagree on that, but my stance would be, it's not particularly relevant to the zoning hearing, because we've got criteria in our zoning code that we need to evaluate this case based upon, and it doesn't include the 100 feet. So the adjacency to a school is a relevant consideration for zoning purposes, but the distance really isn't that critical.
Yeah, I just thought if that wasn't satisfied, it'd be a viewpoint, you know. Thank you.
Alderman Jones?
Alderman Jones.
Yes, Alderman Jones, again. I want to be real clear, uh, Mr. Hoffman, so what I'm, what I'm saying, because it's going to be brought back to us, are we going to have to deal with this again? Because are we going to deal with distance? Is that what we're going to have to deal with?
No.
So that's no longer part of the recommendation that we're going to have to deal with. They're going to be all right with distance. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. I, the hundred feet i- is not the criteria that we're looking at. We're looking at the criteria that is in your zoning code, including, uh, looking at the surrounding uses, the surrounding zoning, uh, public safety, those kind of criteria are what we're looking at. Uh, there is no specific distance requirement in your code, and we're not really here to enforce that.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that, because I want to, I want, I want to make sure that, you know, and I told you, I'm always fair with everybody in the war just doing business. I don't believe in tying one man hand behind his back in the fight. If they're going to, you know, if they're going to be in business, they're putting in that kind of investment, I believe that everybody should have the opportunity to be able to do business. And that's, that's why you will always hear me say that, doing business, there is a business plan that everybody's going by, and I do not think it's fair to give someone something and you don't give the other one something, even at proximity. There, there, they've been good neighbors in the neighborhood, just like everybody else, you know? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm fair with everybody, and when it comes to business and doing what is right, and they've came, they've come to me, and I've never had a problem with them in, where, wherever, I saw the concrete and all, and I saw the space there, that, you know, if they need it be, they could put that over there, but I know they can't see it. I know we can't really understand nothing until this is truly done. I mean, it, it's a mess over there, but I'm glad that it's taken care of, that we're going to have new tanks in the ground, and the investment that they're making is big. And it's big, we just can't, um, shuck it off like they're not doing a great service for the community, and the gas is reasonable, and I believe, you know, as, as the alderman and a city official, we need to make sure that we are helping businesses and not hurting them, all right? And if there's something wrong, you know, like I told you, public safety, we'll be on it. That's my number-one thing. If we're safe, hey, we'll be all right, we'll take care of all of that. I believe that, you know, if we have to, it's going to, even if it was tough on the other one, because there's so much concrete around there, we keep saying, I hear a landscaping, I'm like, have you been over in the neighborhood? Because there is concrete wrapped around that whole place, and we're going to just have to bust up a lot of stuff if we want to put up a tree or something, I don't know, but, you know, we'll make it look, we'll make it look right. I believe they're going to do the right thing, and, um, if, if they need to do something different, let us know, we'll work it out together. But I want them to, I want y'all to have success, and like I say, I don't want your arm tied behind your back. If everybody's fighting, I want them to be fighting fair, you know, just like I said about Sonny, it's the same thing, you know? Hey, when he came over, I was expecting certain things, he did it, same thing with them. If they're trying to do it, I'm with them, all right? So that's just coming from the alderman perspective, and if something is wrong, if they're not right, give the alderman a call, and we'll, we'll surely, I promise you, we'll be right there to try to take care of the situation for you, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, can I respond to those comments? I have to defend trees. Um, trees aren't just pretty. Landscaping isn't just for aesthetics. There are studies galore. You can find so many of them. In fact, I have an entire packet of them, if anybody would like to see them, that prove that the presence of landscaping, flowers, trees, things like that, they not only cool the air, they cool the surface temperature of sidewalks, they act as a visual, uh, slowdown for traffic. People tend to drive a lot faster on streets that don't have trees. Um, they're a deterrent to crime. So landscaping is very important, and when Alderman Jones says that there's not a lot of, there's a lot of concrete in a neighborhood, that's not a good thing. And so the landscape ordinance is designed to mitigate that and to bring the urban forest, the urban canopy, back into the community. People just feel better about being in places, and they behave better in places where there are trees and so forth. You see it all the time. You, you drive through Gary or Chicago Heights, and everybody just throws their trash out the window, you know? It's like, oh, it's a trash heap anyway, there's no nature here, who cares? You go up to someplace that we love to shop, like Geneva or Oak Brook or something like that. It's all about the trees, you know? Everything's beautiful, and people behave better. So it's, I, I'm always going to defend the landscape ordinance. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
This is Steve Case. I'll just, um, kind of add on to that. I, I'm still figuring out how to best evaluate conditional use requests, and I see in front of me that some of the things we're supposed to keep in mind are suitability for proposed uses and/or improvements, which I think, again, comes back to that question of, is this property suitable as far as parking? That's a question that's been raised. And under the plan of the city, the city's comprehensive plan for zoning ordinances is to achieve the following goals, one of which includes generally enhancing aesthetic values throughout the city. And right now, that, as you've, as you've pointed out, the property is, um, it, it, it doesn't look very nice, um, and we don't have any evidence here of a plan to, A, make this a usable property as far as parking goes for the kind of, um, the kind of things that you're asking for, and also, what changes will be made to, um, to improve the property? And so I think there have been some questions about, you know, a, a, a survey, making it more clear. I think those would be, I think those would be very helpful for us to make that decision.
If I can address the landscaping issue first, and then I'll come back to address your comments. You left out the fact that trees absorb carbon dioxide and give off oxygen. I think that's one of their primary benefits. There are no trees on the property now, there hasn't been, but certainly, it's something to pru, you know, improve the aesthetics, but we don't know until we get the construction done. But it's important, because of the timing, the way things work, to get the application in for a conditional liquor license today, because there's windows that we have to meet. And certainly, if this board would recommend a provisional license, we would have a survey done in time for the council to look at it and say, "Okay, here's the parking spots. Oh, look, they're going to put a tree right here," or, you know, if, assuming there is, you know, the space to do so.
Well, you'll have to find the space to do so.
Oh, right.
It's the ordinance.
Right. I understand that. So.
I guess I'm confused, sir. If you're paying contractors to install this stuff now, obviously, somebody knows where the stuff's going to go, so why couldn't you understand where it's going to go and then develop a plan to address the concerns now?
Having been involved in the construction industry, the best-laid plans of mice and men, they run into, "Oh, there's a gas main here, there's a, a Commonwealth Edison line that we didn't even know about, um, and we have to move this, we have to do this." And we would just be spending money that we'd have to be respending. And from a, a timing perspective, I think that we can come up with a survey to show what we will do if we, you know, get a, a provisional okay for a liquor license. I mean, this is costing my clients a great deal of money. I mean, if you just take a look at the size of these tanks, you know, they're incredibly huge. Uh, but they've made a commitment. They're going to be here, they want to stay here, and they obviously want to make a profit. So that's why we're here tonight. And, I'm sorry, to address your issues, we will do a survey, we will have the parking spots lined up, so there'll be no question where they would go, where any landscaping would go, where the garbage would go, but right now, it's imprudent to pay a surveyor to come in and lay it all out.
Mr. McCarthy, I, I, I think that you could do a survey now, uh, if you had a civil engineer who had the time to come out and do it. The biggest problem I'm running into right now is getting somebody out in short order to do the work, not that the work can't be done. The, the property lines haven't changed from when they were purchased.
That's correct.
They're, they're a matter of record, and there's probably a platter survey in the closing documents that show meets and bounds of this property as it was bought by, by the, the owners now. So we do have some data that could be verified by a surveyor, should we, uh, require that that be done. The biggest concern that we have right now is, given the fact that we have a sketch here that is vague, you know, that, that would be substantiated by having a survey, so that you can draw the thing exactly to the scale and size it was supposed to be, would, would, would relieve us of a lot of our concerns. So, you know, it is possible, even with the tanks being on all the dirt there and everything.
I think that, yeah, it is, it's possible. I, I'm very familiar with the survey backup, trying to do a closing on a couple of houses.
Yeah, it's hard.
You know, you, you just, yeah, we'll get to you three months from now. Whoa, wait a minute. We certainly, we'll look for a surveyor that can get it done. The problem is that we're looking at a window that if we don't get a provisional liquor license, it's going to be another twelve months before we can get a liquor license. That's why we're here tonight.
I'm sorry, why is that?
I'm sorry?
Why is it going to be another twelve months? I don't.
It's the condition we use.
It's the conditional use. I don't, um, Arsh, his name is Arsh, he checked into it and was told, "Go ahead, why don't you address?"
Yeah, it's either the liquor license or the, uh, conditional use. There's a twelve-month window after you apply. If we're rejected here, we have to wait another twelve months before we can put in another application.
Right. So I think what, what I'm hearing the planning board saying is that they would like to see a drawing of what you're actually proposing before they would take action on it. So if the conditional use isn't approved yet, it's just continued.
Okay.
And that, that year hasn't started yet. It won't start until the conditional use is either approved or denied.
Okay, that's perfect. I mean, I didn't realize that I needed to bring any survey, like, those type of papers in. I'm sure I can, you know, one of the contractors has it somewhere, and I can get that in. And if, uh, we do need to put greenery in, like a tree or grass, I'm sure we can work that out. I mean, we're trying our best. We're willing to work with you guys. If you guys want, you know, trees on where the spaces are, I'm not sure if you guys saw the, what's it called? The picture of the, yeah, property lines, they're like concrete blocks. Yeah, there's like four, like, or two, uh, blocks of concrete, which were filled in, not filled in, but they were like, you know, just gravel, which, you know, we can convert if they're up to go to, you know, grass or trees or anything you guys would like. I mean, the left side of the, um, across the street from the store on the left side is apartment buildings, it's completely green. I mean, there's one apartment building that just has veins and like, you know, vines all over the house. Uh, on the adjacent side, there is, there are vacant lots, but right across the street, it's just complete, you know, just grass, right? All around the neighborhood is grass, the neighborhood is, you know, it's a regular neighborhood. Uh, by concrete, I think the alderman meant the actual property, which I understand it is like very, you know, concretized, but I think, uh, the previous owner, um, my uncle Tony, he's the one that owns the other, uh, gas stations as well, the gas depots, and he had them personally filled in with gravel, because there was like some issue with that. And if you guys want grass, we can put grass, we can put trees, whatever you guys want there, but we just, you know, we're willing to work with you guys for the license.
Any other comments or questions by anyone in the audience? Okay, the public hearing session is closed. Commissioners, do you have any other questions or comments?
If we get the platter, Chip Roarum, if we get the platter survey, uh, that we can use as a tool to say, "Well, landscaping is satisfied, the parking is satisfied, you can pick up the trash, and the dumpster is in a place where it can all be done," that would require that we meet with you again in thirty days. Okay? Thirty-day extension of this process, you know, as a delay, but it's not a year, it's a month.
Okay.
And that would, I think that would, would ally some of our concerns about, you know, the suitability of how all this stuff fits on this property.
I, I should be able to get it within thirty, um, thirty days. The thing is that it's currently, the map currently is just like this. I'm pretty sure, I mean, we're not changing anything else about the property, right? The canopies are going to be just painted over, and everything else is coming out, but the canopies are like, you know, fifteen feet, and we could break all the concrete around it, and they'll still stay standing. So the actual, like, property isn't changing, so I don't know if you guys can see, like, right next to the canopy from the left, there's like a little concrete block there, and on the right, there's a concrete block there. That's what I was talking, referencing for the greenery. If we could, if you guys want to put greenery there, that's perfect, but I think I would need to get another surveyor to come in and, you know, have that lined up with the parking spots that were mentioned, because I think the current one is just like this. So the current one would include the parking spots, but I don't think it would include the greenery.
I have one other question, and it's not about what we're talking about yet, it's something else.
Uh-huh.
It's that I've noticed that over the last few months, um, you've added lighting to the building.
Yeah, we're still working on more lighting, um, around the top of the building. We had some, when we first got in the store, we put like a LED strip all around the store, and I, I think after like two, three weeks, it just went out, and now it just flashes like green now, which, you know, our gas station is, you know, the color is green, so we're fine with that. And we are planning to put on, um, LED lights around the actual canopy if it's, if we can, and around the actual, uh, what's it called, gas sign.
That's, that's something that I wanted to bring up.
Yeah, we've changed the code to not allow LED strings.
We can take them down as fast as we can. That's perfectly fine. LED lights outweighs the liquor license. Yeah, we can take them out, anything you guys need, we can get it done.
All right. Ready to ask? I feel like we should table this to give them time to come up with a better plan. Um, I, does it really need to be a professional work of a surveyor, or can we come up with something a little less formal that he could reasonably get in thirty days?
It doesn't have to be a survey drawing, no, but it should be a drawing to scale.
I, I would urge that the platter survey that you might have in the closing documents.
If we could use, uh, an existing platter survey.
And if you need somebody to help you, you know, draw that out to scale, there are people that could do that.
We'll do, we'll have it done to scale over on top of what already exists.
Yeah.
That'd save a.
That's all you need.
Big chunk of money to have the whole place surveyed again.
Time more than anything.
Obviously, you want to get this to move along, but, um, the thought that come to mind, Alderman Marzak, um, that's a corner there, and I would encourage the line of sight with traffic coming either direction, what kind of landscaping that you'd be putting there, whether that be a tree or a hedge or so, something of that nature, so it's not blocking, you know, that view. I, wherever you're going to put that, I'm just saying, that's something to keep in mind, because, you know, we've had issues where you come up to a corner and you can't see because you're blocked by a hedge or a.
In this case, uh, those both blockers, it's a random thing. It shouldn't be too big of a problem, because you can see the store coming up the middle on the left side, just with the canopies, and coming from the north, you can just see the backwards.
All right.
I'm ready to offer a table. Regarding PB 2023-7-2, a request for a conditional use, use permit to operate a liquor, like, liquor store at 330 South Nelson Avenue, a gas depot, Zone C2, by, uh, Ham Petromark L, L.C. I move that we table this, uh, action until our next month's meeting, where the, uh, survey and site plan will be to scale and provided to us, so that we can discern clients' expectations.
Second.
We have a motion by Chip Roarum, and second by Jose Barajas. Any questions, comments?
Chip Roarum.
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas.
Yes.
Steve Case.
Yes.
Susan Lopez.
Yes.
Arthur Lacks.
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Chip Roarum. I think, did you already? Beverly Hood. Sorry, I'm tired.
President.
Yes.
It's the right line of business.
It's the Chicago way.
Yes.
Yes.
Next case, PB 2023-7-3, request to vacate a portion of the alley between Skyler and East Avenue, South Station Street. Would the applicant please come forward?
Adam Bumgarner.
Tell us what your plan is, Adam.
I'm going to give us some handouts if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, um, we are here, uh, requesting, uh, to vacate the alley over at 150 East Station Street, um, to allow for an outdoor patio. In the packet, uh, you'll find a couple of different, uh, pieces of information. One, the letter from the fire department, which you guys might already have, um, and then the other documents are more just kind of some supporting documents. Uh, obviously, we did, I did get a, the packet, uh, from Mr. Hoffman, kind of, uh, spelling out some of the concerns from the few of the neighboring properties, um, so I think it was really just to help address those, um, with the, kind of, just overall size of the alley and the distance. The two folks who had a, uh, concern with it are both on the opposite end of the alley of where we'd vacate, um, so we did, uh, supply, supply some measurements and kind of pathways showing, um, just the, I guess, trying to explain the logic of why they'd want to go three times the distance, uh, to leave their facility, um, to get to the road. Uh, so, answer any questions?
We have, um, been down this alley before, and my concern is still the same as it was last time, and that's for delivery vehicles and, uh, people that need to pull into the properties that would be closest to the vacated part. How do trucks and so forth turn around in there? I went down there tonight, and sure, I could turn my car around in there, but not if I was driving a big panel truck or something.
For sure. I, I think the expectation of a semi turnaround in there would be unrealistic. Um, I, I think the expectation of a semi truck backing down there is, uh, more than realistic, frankly. I think you could back two semi trucks down there, um, and we kind of show that kind of in some of the illustrations, but, um, you know, I think compared to majority of the alleys that exist, uh, in any sort of urban area, this is a luxury, um, as far as the size of the alley. Um, to, to back semis down there, to have UPS vehicles come down there, I think that's a, a, a hot dog down a hallway. Um, I mean, just an easy, easy in and out, um, stretch. I, I would definitely not argue that a semi is not going to turn around in the alley, um, but it, uh, there is adequate room.
So there would be what, signage at the entrance to the alley telling people that they don't have the opportunity to turn around and they need to back in?
Yeah, I think it would be very visible. Um, I don't think a, uh, anyone driving a truck, um, I think they're very experienced in these situations. I don't think this is an uncommon, um, I don't think it's an uncommon, semi trucks back up to docks every day. They don't pull into docks and then turn around at a dock. Um, so I don't, I think the expectation of a, a semi truck driver backing down is, I don't think this is unusual. In addition to, I don't, the only people who ever have a semi truck down that alley is myself, um, even that's not very often, but like, there is not semi traffic in that alley, but should there be, there is definitely adequate room, um, and I, I, as far as signage goes, would be happy to add some additional signage, um, but I, you know, there'd be a large fence, uh, that would be on what would be the south end of that patio, that, you know, you would see that, it's a, that, you know, I'm sure there'd be a dead end, uh, sign on the alley, but then you'd also see that, that structure.
Well, that brings me to another question.
Yes.
I was going to ask what, you know, since this is an outdoor event space and not a vacation where there's going to be like a building place there, I was going to ask, what would the perimeter look like? What, what's it going to be? Is it a wall, a fence?
A large wall, fence, um, you know, the fence would have to open up, we'd have two gates that would be six foot wide each, um, to open up to be an eight foot, or I'm sorry, a 12-foot access, um, for fire truck apparatus, equipment to get through, uh, in the event of emergency. At one point, we had on our drawing shrubs and stuff on the backside of that, and that was actually something the fire department pushed back on, because they want everything to be removable in the case of emergency, to get in and out. Um, so on the south end of that wall, there wouldn't be any additional landscaping per the, uh, creating the access, there, you know, that should anyone need to get through.
What would the material be? I mean, do you have any sort of drawing or...
I don't. I, I would tell you it would be, the gates would be made out of steel with probably a wood face, um, just, you know, it's going to be some sort of a steel to support, and be very, there may have gates, um, so to swing and not sag, and, um, so I, I think it'd be a, it'd be a steel frame, um, with probably like a cedar wood on it, uh, to try to make it aesthetically as pleasing as possible.
And would this just be across the alley, or would this be around another?
Nope, just, just along the south end of that, which would be the north end of that alley, but the, the south end of the patio.
Can you show me on here exactly where it would be?
Absolutely. Um, so... The edge of, the edge of, I'll say, I'm going to do the break.
Okay.
Right here, and go straight across.
So it's going to be cat form or something?
So basically, go to the edge of that new brick, if you see that picture, um, and go shoot directly across, uh, to the west of the alley, uh, to the blue building.
This is Steve Case. Adam, can you tell us a little bit, I mean, you said outdoor event space, can you tell us a little bit about how the space is going to be used, what you're envisioning it for?
Um, so we have, you see on the photos there, there's two glass garage doors, um, so just when we have, um, stuff going on inside of the space, um, to be, you know, a nice, nice to be able to have outdoor seating, garage doors open, um, just overall, uh, indoor/outdoor space.
Would you, I, I see the mock-up sort of at the bottom of, of what's our page 33, right?
Yes.
Um, so the fence would be temporary, or, or in, in the sense it would have to, it would have to be able to open for emergency vehicles. Um, are you still anticipating sort of the greenery that you have in the drawing here? So on the other side, um, I guess on the north side, are you, and, and the rest, all of the other greenery that we sort of see in that picture of the parking lot, are you still envisioning all of that being a part of this?
Yes, the, so, yes and, yes and no. Let me, uh, on the greenery that kind of shows like in the alley, that would not be there. On the north end of it, yes. Now, we would still have to leave a pathway for emergency vehicles on that north end as well. So there would be a 12-foot space that would probably be like a perennial, like, perennials, something that they drive over with zero obstructions, um, because we would have removable bollards on the north side, um, so they could make a pass all the way through. Um, you know, everything on the, so if you're looking at that picture, which was on page two of your guys' handout, uh, from Mr. Hoffman, that adjacent building is currently indoor storage units, um, so...
It's currently what? I'm sorry?
Indoor storage units.
Okay.
Um, painted blue. Um, the, the long-term plan for that, uh, would be to make that retail storefronts that would actually face, um, face the north, so face that parking lot. That is not in the request or proposal for tonight, um, so just to be clear on that. But this patio helps bring that, bringing that whole corner together. Without this patio, I think that building, that building probably never comes to fruition, because it kind of creates, I don't want to say one building, but kind of a nice L-shaped corridor where people can walk from place to place. Um, uh, but, you know, I, I know that shows in the, in the drawing, because that is kind of our overall plan, but, but that's really not on the, so any point in that is any landscaping in front of that building would, is not included in this.
So I have another question, um, and, and I don't know, I don't know if you can answer this, or if this is sort of a more general question for everyone, but when the north end of the alley was originally vacated, right, the, that parking lot, but now I'm looking at, at, thank you, I'm looking at number one, that parking lot was, I understand, maybe donated to the city, but in any case, the alley now kind of turns out through that parking lot, correct?
Yes, correct.
And it's my understanding that a lot of the businesses, and I've spoken to some of the business owners in, you know, say four, five, six, seven, that region, are, are really against this, because they don't want to lose, you know, ease of getting through the alley and delivery and things. Well, what about the parking lot in number nine, right? I, I, I've been down that alley, but I can't remember, is there a, a fence between the alley and, you know, along the, um, the east side of the alley, between the alley and number, uh, number nine? Because I'm just, I'm just thinking, if there was a way to make, uh, the, the parking lot in number nine sort of drive through from the alley in similar ways to parking lot of number one, suddenly, the businesses in four, five, six, and seven would have, they wouldn't have to back out, they could do, you know, they could do a, a pull-through, and there would be a very small portion at the north part of the alley, just south of, of what Adam's proposing, that would be a dead end. Does that make sense? And I don't know if that's beyond the scope of, of, of what we're discussing, but...
Wow, so, so nine is, is privately owned, is owned by Duane Dean, I guess, so we don't have any control over what happens on that piece, whereas lot one is actually a village, city property, so we do have control over that.
But is it a, I mean, not directly perhaps bearing on, on the motion in front of us, but is it a conversation that could be had?
Sure.
I, does that help, does that help us at all with the north end, though?
It just seems like it would, I mean, if you look at, for instance, the, the businesses at six, seven, and five, it seems like it would make their, uh, their primary objection to your plan, uh, much less cogent, if they could, you know, drive up through the alley and then go out through that parking lot in number nine. That might be, I mean, if, if you're interested in getting your neighbors on board, um, because I, I, because it's hard for me to support something that a lot of the other businesses on this alley want to see, but if you're interested in getting your neighbors on board, maybe some alternatives that would open up the alley a little bit more would make them not so, uh, against closing, uh, closing off the middle of the alley.
I'd like to talk about another possibility, uh, because I, I think that, oh, I just want to give you another possibility.
Sure.
Um, right now, there is an outdoor area that's being used for seating, that's on, on your sheet, things with, to the north of these bollards, right?
Correct.
So you, you put seating out there, tables and chairs, outdoor seating, umbrellas, whatever you want to do.
Yeah.
And you're, you're proposing that that be done further south as well?
Yes.
All the way back, pretty much to the blue building?
Yes.
Okay. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I was in Chicago, and I went to an Italian restaurant called Brunis, it's at 27th and Oak, and in the summertime, Brunis and another restaurant, at least one other restaurant, that lot, close the street, and you can, you know, on a, on a weekend night, they do it, and they close the street, you know, at, at the one block of it, and have a band out there, and they have seating out there, and everybody sits out and eats, has a good time, and music is playing. It's okay with the city of Chicago. Um, when that's over, you could drive a fire truck right down the middle of it, you could drive an ambulance down the middle of it, vendors can drop all the stuff to the restaurants, whatever that might be. And I'm just wondering, in lieu of closing this thing off, is there an opportunity where we could actually discuss a temporary use as part of a relationship with the city of Kansas City instead of closing the thing off?
I think the, you know, my concern with that would be just the daily operation of, of business not being able to have that. So a couple of things, A, that, that just indoor/outdoor feel to that space without it having to be like a special use permit every, every time.
No, I'm not abiding in relationship, not a special use.
Okay.
And, and, you know, I, I'm understanding you're going to take tables and chairs out there, which are good.
Right.
I mean, they are in my county.
For sure, 100%.
You know, and, and, you know, you, you could clear that off and get that 12 feet cleared, just by moving a few tables and chairs out of the way, uh, during the day, or whatever it is, because this thing's going to probably happen at night, right? Or is it going to happen, you know, lunch hour and all that stuff out there, too?
Uh, it'll, it'll, I guess, I, I guess that's still up in the air, um, so I don't know, um, I think part of that, I think part of this probably dictates what happens there.
Okay.
You know, that's kind of the, what all that space can be used for, probably does hinge partially on this. I mean, right now, you know, another point is technically, you, we have double doors in the center, that's why we have two glass, glass garage door on each side, and then double doors in the middle. Those double doors currently do not count as an egress for us, because you can't have an egress that dumps into an alley, um, or into a parking lot, or into a street. Um, so, um, you know, part of this is a, is an egress piece, um, uh, part of it's just enhancing that space, enhancing the downtown, um, uh, help, helping try to make that other building, you know, I think, that other building, I don't think indoor storage units are, um, something that fits well in the current downtown, uh, atmosphere, but at the same time, to make that investment, to convert them to something different, um, it's kind of, all got to make sense.
So, Adam, is it fair to say you kind, you, one of the reasons you want to make this semi-permanent is to sort of tie together these two properties in some sense?
100%, yes, yeah. It kind of helps make that whole corner an attractive, I think, entertainment, you know, just a nice area, those buildings kind of tied together, it becomes, um, and that space lends, you know, our back space, you know, it's 4,500, 4,800 square feet, the glass garage, it just, it fits with that space. I think the outdoor, um, you know, I think it fits with what the downtown's doing, um, I think it just, it kind of fits all around. Again, I understand, uh, I, I, frankly, I really don't understand some of the pushback from neighbors, um, uh, just because I, I, I struggle with why, when you could go literally a third of the distance to be on the road, why you would want to travel three times longer. Um, I, to me, that just, the logic doesn't, I, I think there's a deeper issue there, um, on a personal level, um, that creates the objection, um, because I think just to be, you know, so according, Mr. Hoffman, to your, so A1, which is at, uh, that would be number six, um, they had an issue with it. And then Manuel Diaz, I don't know if that's Manuel Diaz and Protection Associates, I think, I believe they're two separate, um, because Manuel Diaz is number eight.
Yeah, but I think there's a relation... Yeah, but I think there's a relationship there with number seven, too, and I will also say that the owner of number five, Rabidu, Deanna Rabidu, who owns the 360 Southeastern also call, East Avenue, also called after I wrote this memo.
Gotcha.
And she would prefer this not to happen, too. Her concerns were trash and access, and it really isn't the distance that you're talking about, it's the ability to be able to move through the alley and not have to turn around or back up or anything else is what I got out of their comments.
Right. You know, I think building number eight, as you can see in the pictures, it's a boarded-up building. We've been working little by little on that 150 East Station project, building for the last eight years. That building's been boarded up for the last eight years, it's had concrete pollards blocking their parking lot for the last eight years. Not to say that opinion doesn't matter, but it, you know, so, yeah, I, I, I think it would be a great fit for the downtown, and obviously be a great fit for our space, I think.
I think it's probably worth mentioning that, that the trend since COVID, actually, has been toward outdoors. I noticed we tried to park in front of our favorite restaurant in Frankfurt last week, and we couldn't because the streets now closed so that the restaurants, all four of them along there, can spill out into the street and have that space on weekends and evenings. I'm just seeing more pedestrian-friendly spaces created. We're a car culture, and especially in Kansas City, we're a car culture, and we kind of need to get with the program and start changing that to more of a pedestrian culture. And if we're going to have, is it the Pope Race Building where we're going to have those apartments?
Hopefully.
Condos, yeah. And then, of course, over the bank, you know, we're going to have a larger concentration of people living downtown, and we already have a pretty good concentration of people working downtown. Making it more pedestrian-friendly and less about cars just seems like progress to me. And it may not be an easy transition for some people, and people might worry about where I'm going to go with my car, you know, but communities that are more progressive and that are more business-friendly get past those things, they work, they work around them. That being said, I, Dina's concern about trash, we've actually talked about this, trash does blow up against barriers and collect there, that's, that's fact. There's a house at the end of my street that gets all the cornstorm from the cornfield in the fall, and the whole house gets papered with corn, you know? So, and the wind direction there is favorable for trash to blow up against this barrier. How would we address trash building up in there?
I mean, I, my off-the-cuff response would be, I mean, that can be something we're responsible for, is to clean up the trash along, I mean, and I'm not saying we're not perfect in this department either, so I'm not going to beat up my neighbors because we don't do it well enough either today. That alley's nothing to be proud of today. It's not well-kept. We all could be better at that. So, you know, I think, I think we would be, as far as the trash specifically, I think we could handle that. I think that would be a fair request that we, we become responsible for any trash buildup along that fence. I mean, ultimately, at that point, it would be on, well, the alley's not technically our property on what would be the backside of that fence, it would be in front of a building we own, you know? So we, we own the two buildings adjacent to that, number two and three, so the, all of that buildup would be behind, all that accumulation, whatever would accumulate would be directly behind our property, more so than anybody else's, because it would all blow that way.
Open it up for a public hearing. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case may do so at this time.
Dave Barron, Alderman, Second Ward. I, I had more of a question here, and I'm really just taking it for information. The, the lack of a space between the building and the alley itself, you indicated that that was a, that made it so that that double door could not be an ingress egress. How does that impact your use of the building, your plans, your operations for the building? And that, that, yeah, and then how does that impact you?
I think drastically, in the sense of limits the occupant load, because we only have a single egress, that would be a true egress, so our occupant load would have to be under 50.
And is it, if that's opened up to a, you know, a sidewalk, a 60-inch sidewalk, that is not an alleyway but is something else, would that then be able to be designated as ingress egress?
Yes.
That, that just, that seems to be an inhibitor of the use of the property in a way that some of the other considerations aren't. If you could provide for, I mean, this may not be what you're looking for, but 60 inches to allow for that to serve as an ingress egress that provides for greater use of the property, and the inside does look good, but that's, that, that just, I had not thought about how that particular issue impacts you.
Yes, it would, the, you know, you could, and I'm not, not trying to be over dramatic, you could solve the ingress egress piece with a simple, we would still, I believe, need some provisions for that because we would be approaching that. But that specific piece, you could solve with a five-foot by block. Or eight foot, whatever, but it would not, you know, the curb appeal, would it be there? The, the, you know, the grand plan wouldn't be there, but the ingress egress specifically would not reject that.
And some of the peculiar aspects about the size of this alley, the building itself, that, that, you know, it's not what you're proposing, but it is just one of the issues that you just raised, and I'm bringing up is a potential way to make it more pedestrian-friendly while solving an issue for the use of the building potentially.
Man, or Jack, one other way that you could handle that situation is recess the doors in the building a little bit so that there was room for the door to open and person to get out of the building in safety. And that, that's another way to get it, get it done.
Any other questions, comments from the public, public hearings, polls? Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Yeah, one, one thing that I am having difficulty understanding here is, okay, typically, when an alley is vacated, the ownership of the property goes to the adjacent property owner, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
In this case, he owns both sides.
You would be, you would own the property out to the edge of the public parking area, right?
Yes.
Okay. So if you are having outdoor events, would you be serving alcohol at those events? And the reason I ask this is because we just approved, or suggested approval, for a food truck park with an outdoor space for gathering, but we said no alcohol because we don't have any provision currently for having liquors consumed outdoors. How would you handle that?
So it, it would be outdoors, but it would be on our property, not city property. So I believe the food truck is on city property, is that?
Well, no, we, we approved a ordinance that would allow for food truck courts on private property without liquor. However, I would equate this to an outdoor restaurant patio.
Because like, currently, we can have alcohol at the front, on the front patio.
Okay. So this would just be considered the, a larger patio?
Yes.
Space, okay.
And designated for that space.
Okay.
Chip Roan, I have a question. You know, I brought up the idea of the possibility of some kind of a relationship, be an admiral to be able to coexist. Is there any traction to that idea? Is that something that I'm just making up, or is it something?
No, it's not something you're making up. We, we entertained an idea like this behind the Majestic a couple of years ago, we're working with Terrence at that point in time, he ended up dropping that proposal, but it was something that was discussed, where it was going to be in that case, remain a public alley that kind of closed on weekends for events that they were having at the bank facility and that kind of thing, and then opened up during the rest of the week. So it is something, at least in another situation, we entertained, it was never adopted, but it was discussed.
I wouldn't be opposed to that. I think my, the biggest off-the-cuff hurdle would be like the improvements, like, because, like, based on how that would happen, who would pay, who would fund the improvements?
Yeah, it'd be fixtures first, equipment.
Yeah, and physical patio, correct, that, but then trying to create an actual patio, because if, you know, you can kind of see in that picture, our elevation is about six or eight inches higher, our floor elevation in the actual alley. So, you know, should this be something that we were able to move forward with, you know, that patio would sit.
I just wanted to very quickly, this is Steve Case, echo Deb's comments on, on wanting to support things that are going to make the city more pedestrian-friendly. I think, I think that's fantastic, and I, and I, I think we should do that. I, I am just very hesitant, especially with these established businesses that are there on the block that are, you know, whether, whether you agree with them or not, saying that this is really going to be difficult for, you know, getting our trucks in, for our deliveries, for, was the comment on trash about it, there being trash or about being able to pick up, like, take out the garbage?
Was it about the trash collecting against the barrier?
Or was it about them collecting the trash from their businesses, like with a garbage truck?
I have a bigger concern about that, too.
Okay.
Question, I, I think the way, I'm sorry, you haven't finished.
Well, that's, so I just, it's, concerns like that make it very hard for me to support this as is. I, I would love for us to sit down with the other people on this block and think about creative ways that we could get, you know, get what you want in the sense of, you know, this pedestrian-friendly space, but also open up better access for them behind their businesses. That's not a, that's not a motion, that's just a comment, sorry.
One, one thing just to address, just because I came up with the trash, we, I did actually talk to our rep at Homewood Disposal specifically, and he said getting in and out of the alley would not, because we would then, you know, our dumpster crowd currently is on what would be the north end of the blue storage building, so we would flip that around to the backside of, into the alley, where currently it's not. And he said their trucks would have zero issues pulling in, getting the trash packing out, and he said we'd do that every day. So that specific one, I can't talk to, you know, our FedEx and UPS drivers, which I got to imagine are the same as everyone else's in the alley, they had zero issues with it. They have special delivery drivers, maybe they might have issues with it, I don't know, but the, the kind of the, the main ones, trash, FedEx, UPS, we, we have had conversations with those folks, because we get those deliveries every day, and no issues with those ones specifically.
I have a question, Arturo Barajas. My question is, like, what are your plans for the winter days or that will be shut down, or?
Yeah, I don't think there would be a lot of action out there. I think, I think, not saying there would never be any, but, but I would definitely be...
Depends on the weather?
Yeah, depends on the weather. I think, you know, people to step outside and have a smoke, or, you know, I think it would still be used for some of that kind of stuff.
Oh, okay.
But as far as people sitting outside and hanging out, it probably would, would be very limited at that time.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just a heads up, we have 10 more minutes before our video feed is going to go out and go to maintenance, so. Not trying to rush you guys, but if we need to continue it, we need to continue it, but we do only have 10 more minutes of live public taping, so. I mean, I...
I kind of feel like, you know, we've been talking about this for a very long time, and I feel like the, the biggest issue was the, the safety issue. As Steve says, there's, you know, we have to take into consideration the other business owners and the opinions of other people, but when we do that, we also have to decide whether the things that they're saying are going to be problems really are problems, or if there's something that can be resolved. And we certainly have a fair number of other instances in the city of Kansas City where you do have to back into an alley and come back out. We have alley vacations all over the place, but they're either properly vacated or they just somehow managed to end up that way. Kind of like with current patio.
For sure.
You know, there's no record of that ever being actually vacated, but...
And on that note, I did, I did see that, but one, one comment just on that, so everybody knows, the city actually poured that patio, so just, so they actually poured and paid for that patio, because they own that, so, just, just, I don't want to, I don't want to think I did that overnight.
No, no, that was not you. Absolutely not.
The safety concern was the biggest issue, and this letter from the fire department was significant to me, and I feel like, you know, that, with that obstacle being pretty much taken care of, I feel like we owe it to, at this point, after what, a couple of years like this, to move and not keep, you know, continuing and pushing, kicking the can down the road. I don't know if the other commissioners feel that way or not. You want to make a motion? I think I'll make a motion. Case PB 2023-7-3, the request to vacate a portion of the alley between Skyler and East Avenue. I would like to move that we, that's a map amendment, so that goes to council, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I would like to recommend that we, or that I would like to move that we recommend approval of the request, and I would attach as findings, the findings as presented by the planning department, but also the letter from the Kansas City Fire Department from Captain Chris Falazar that states that all of the problems have been addressed, and that they are comfortable with the request.
Does the possibility of the idea of working something out, is it still, is it still possible if this is recommended that forward to the city?
Um, sure. I, I, you know, I don't, if, if you vac, well, if, if you recommend vacation and the city vac, recommend, approves vacation, then it's his, and there's not any negotiation going on. If negotiation's going to happen, it needs to happen before any formal act, well, before the city council takes action to vacate. Could be after you make a recommendation.
Do you have a motion on the floor? Do you have a second?
A second.
We got a motion by Deb Terrell and a second by Jose Arturo Barajas. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas?
Yes.
Steve Case?
No.
Susan Lopez?
No.
No.
Chip Warham?
Yes.
Arthur Lacks?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
All right, so we have a one, two, three, four, five, yes, two, no, so that's a recommended mediation of approval to the city council.
Thank you.
Other businesses?
It's time to go home.
Welcome to the chair.
If I could as I could, I would.
20-minute meeting? 20-minute one, and now you have the three hours.